Here we go. Good evening. I call to order the business meeting of the Beaverton School Board on November 28th, 2023 at 7:02 PM. I want to note that all seven school board members are present with the Ghana attending virtually. Bienvenidos and welcome to everybody. We will start the Beaverton with a land acknowledgement and the Beaverton School Board would like to acknowledge that our schools sit on the land of the Towaltan Kalapuya people. We recognize we are not the first teachers and learners of this land in that there is still a native presence here today, including the nine Oregon tribes. Land acknowledgements continue to evolve and we will continue to consult with our local tribal partners as we consider how to honor the original stewardship of this land. We'll begin with the review of the agenda. Board members, if anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda or pull an item from the consent agenda, this is a time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda? Would anyone like to request anything? If no, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Let me scroll down. There we have some recognitions tonight. Tonight, we will recognize two individuals for their outstanding achievement and contributions to the Beaverton School District and the community. So we have Lea Benazi and Celia, so Lea Whitehead. Did I say that right? Okay. First, we'll actually do Lea Benazi. And Lea, would you please come up to the presenter table at the front of the room? Or you can both come up, yeah. Just up here, up at the...Lea is a school psychologist and has been named the Oregon School Psychologist of the Year by the Oregon School Psychologists Association. The School Psychologist of the Year Award recognizes excellence amongst field-based practitioners who provide school psychology services directly to our students. Each year, the award recognizes one outstanding school psychologist in each state, and Lea was recognized at Oregon's annual conference here in Oregon in October. Congratulations to Lea. And would you like to say a few words about receiving this statewide honor?
Sure. I don't have written remarks, but I certainly appreciate the chance to bring school psychologist role to the board and draw attention to the work that school psychologists do. It's certainly a team effort, both the department here in Beaverton and each individual special education team in the district. There's no way a school psychologist could accomplish their work without the help of their team. So I really appreciate the teams that I've been a part of for almost 20 years now in Beaverton with a quick switch last year to do some teaching for University of Oregon to bring a school psychology cohort to the Portland area, which I know will benefit our district in years to come because there's always a shortage of school psychologists. So this honor was unexpected, and I'm so grateful and humbled, and I really appreciate you having me here tonight. Thank you.
If you want to come up, we have a little picture, and if you have family or friends that you want up here, that would be great, too. And the board will come up, too.
I have the honor of presenting to Greenway Elementary PE teacher Celia Whitehead, who's been named Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year by the Oregon Society of Health and Physical Educators. Shapes, I like that. Shapes Teacher of the Year Program recognizes outstanding teachers in adapted physical education, school health education, dance education, and physical education at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Ms. Whitehead was honored for her dedication, creativity, leadership, and positivity. Sorry, can't say that last word. Congratulations, and would you like to say some, have some words?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you, first of all, for taking the time to recognize this achievement. I continue to just feel humbled and honored to receive this award. In the past 11 years in Beaverton School District, I've worked extremely hard to create the PE program at Greenway Elementary, and I hope that anyone who comes to visit can see and feel the inclusive and fun, hardworking, high-intensity culture that has been built in my PE program. And in fact, I invite all of you, board members and superintendents, to come and experience what physical education can look like right now. And my students love to have visitors to showcase all that they are learning in their physical skills and their fitness development, so I invite you to come and join. I believe that Beaverton is a unique district to work for and has had many Elementary PE Teachers of the Year since I've been here. Joel Miller from Sexton Mountain, Kristy Wilson at Raleigh Park, Nicole Sareda from West TV, Cheryl Wardell, who is a retired PE teacher and former PE TOSA. She was recognized as state and then also district Teacher of the Year, and Greg Luscheitis, who is currently an adaptive PE teacher, and he received the National Adaptive PE Teacher of the Year Award. It's been a privilege to learn from some of the best PE teachers, not only within our district but across the country, too. I've been so thankful for these opportunities to attend our State Shape America Conference as well as our National PE Conference through our district's tuition reimbursement program that really values our continued education. I've gotten to attend this national conference for the past seven years, and I've been presenting in 2021, and I've been accepted to present again this next year in 2024. And finally, I've just been thankful for opportunities during our staff development workdays to have PE-specific trainings, to learn from our PE TOSAs and colleagues, and to look forward to seeing how the district supports specialists in this way in the future. Elementary PE teachers don't get a lot of opportunities to collaborate with other schools and other PE teachers. In the elementary level, there's only one or two PE teachers at a school, so we always value having that time to learn from each other and take valuable content back to our schools. So thank you again for this recognition.
We'll have you, we'll have you come up for a picture as well. Thank you so much for your work. It's now time to hear comments from our community. Oh, wait, oops, took it wrong. Oh, yep, sorry. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, the superintendent's report from Dr. Balderas.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I appreciate the board and staff providing the information this afternoon during the study session. We're feeling the trauma due to conflict in the Middle East that is causing harm here in the U.S., here specifically in Beaverton. We've said this before, and we'll say it again, we have no space in our schools for hate. We have no space in our schools for hate. We are an incredibly diverse district, something that we're very, very proud of. Our students come to us speaking over 100 languages. Almost 60% of our kids are kids from diverse backgrounds. We honor and respect everyone of our kids, our educators, our community, who, we understand the influence that we have as a captive audience of students and understand the greatness that our diversity brings to our classrooms. We wanted to just make sure that we acknowledge that, but also that we do have a process that we've created here in Beaverton to create an anti-bias reporting tool that's been communicated to families via Parents Square to make sure people understand that. It could be anonymous, or you can put your name on it, but we will act on that. So just make sure people are aware that we do have an anti-bias reporting tool that we urge people to use if there's ever a situation. We also have the Safe Oregon tip line, which has been in place to be able to report any situations, and that can be done by text, email, or call-in. So it's also available for folks. Most schools that I've been visiting the last two years have installed wellness spaces in their classrooms, in their schools. There's a classroom dedicated, and there's a staff member, sometimes it's there, but every school has some support, some level of support for kids. So again, just make sure that we continue to promote those spaces for our students that need that extra support, especially during traumatic times. And we'll continue to address any situation that's reported at schools. That's something that we support our staff and to make sure that they acknowledge that kids report to their teachers, teachers report to their administrators, and we follow the process at elementary, middle, and high school to make sure that our kids are safe and their families are heard. And we're very fortunate to have a lot of different languages here, so we do have a lot of translation services to be able to provide that support for our families. I just want to make sure they acknowledge that piece because I know that that's something that's top of mind for many of us. Also, just want to just remark that we've been able to provide some additional classified support after the beginning of school year, something that we're really, something that's needed. I know that's something that we heard often, and the $8 to $9 million that that's going to cost us here is going to be something that we're going to look to try and sustain because I know that there's an impact right now in our classrooms. There's a strong impact in our classrooms that we need to address, and that's just the impact in our classroom to hire our support staff to help our faculty in buildings, but also to retain and make sure we train them as best we can with the resources that we have. So that's something we're going to continue to work with our association partners, with our faculty, with our principals, to make sure that we, again, hire the very best, retain those folks, and train them to the best of our ability. And lastly, want to talk about our kid governor, our kid governor from Zoya Shaw, from fifth grade student at Findlay, and that was appointed the Oregon Kid Governor of the Year this year, and her platform is focused, again, on student mental health. It was out, had the opportunity to visit with Zoya and her family. It's always fun to have student leadership at a young level, at a young age, be able to, you know, put herself out there to be nominated and be selected as a representative for students in Oregon. So that's just a wonderful testament to our student body. Again, thank you, Chair Perez and the board, for tonight. I know we have a long meeting, a lot of good stuff happening, so just appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments. We'll start with comments from our employee groups, starting with OSEA and then BEA. Can you please come up? Or roll up. Scooter up. And your mics are on. I think the two middle ones are on right now. Oh, she stopped.
Good evening, Superintendent Balderas, Chair Perez, and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. I hope that you all had a recharging and fulfilling break last week. This work is hard and important, and it's good for us to find moments to rest. I'm here tonight with many of my colleagues to amplify a message. BSD students and staff need more support. I've sat here in front of you many times to talk about the fact that our students are showing up every day with increased needs, more mental health challenges, more need for intervention, more basic needs being unmet, et cetera, et cetera. All of our staff and students are impacted by these increased needs. We're seeing students act out and not able to engage in learning because their behavioral health needs are not being met. Staff who are working many, many hours outside of their contract to differentiate curriculum and develop classroom routines to address the variety of academic and social levels in each class, or just to make sure that they are getting to each and every student on their caseload. And we're seeing students receiving special education services who are not receiving adequate support. I want to recognize and applaud district leaders for already taking steps to mitigate the challenges we are facing. And Dr. Balderas talked a little bit about this already, but specifically adding a huge number of paraeducators to schools, providing professional development opportunities for those paraeducators, allocating additional funding for students with extreme behavioral and mental health needs, and adjusting the staffing ratio at our ACE program. These supports will no doubt make a difference in the day-to-day experiences of our staff and students. That said, there are still needs that will remain unmet, and I don't want to just sit here and share problems, so here are some proposed solutions. First, safe learning conditions for all students and staff, including consistent supports and accountability measures for students. We know our students thrive when they feel safe, when they have, when they are given structure and consistency, when they know what the expectations are and they are held accountable to them, and when they know that the educators with whom they interact every day care enough about them to meet them where they are and to teach them how to be a part of a safe and supportive learning community. Second, zooming in on special education, adjusted staffing ratios for special educators, including resource room teachers, specialized program teachers, speech-language pathologists, and school psychologists, as well as the paraprofessionals who support them. For many of our special education staff, caseloads are simply too high to maintain effective and legally required services. People are getting hurt, and students are not able to get the individualized attention they so desperately need. And finally, clear communication about special education processes and procedures, especially the pre-referral process for students. While we know there are many twists and turns within special education processes and that many depend on the individual student, there is so much uncertainty that creates a feeling of helplessness for educators when trying to work with students and families. More transparency of those processes would help educators and families know what to expect as they navigate an incredibly complex system. These are just a few things that we can do to make the experiences of our staff and students better every day. Let's work together to create the schools Beaverton students and families deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, and hello, Chrissy.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening, Dr. Balderas, Chair Perez, members of the school board, and executive admin that are here. My name is Kirsty Sakman. I am a Paraturover here for our district and our OSEA Classified President. We want to say that we are excited and proud to stand here together in solidarity with Lindsay Katie and the entire group of BEA staff that are here. We're thankful for our classified staff that could also show up tonight in solidarity because we know that we all work together better because we are stronger together. There is no certified versus classified versus admin. We are the team that needs to be kept and held and supported so that we can hold up our students, hold up our communities, and continue working hard for our communities as well as for ourselves and our teammates. We at OSEA are very thankful to continue to be invited into different conversations, into different meetings, and to have the opportunity to have open and honest listening ears. We continue to see growth in this way. I know I've mentioned before that we're excited and thankful to be invited to meetings, but this year, as Lindsay said, this year, we see a big change, and we recognize and appreciate all the hard work that the district is doing to come up with creative solutions, and we're thankful that a lot of those ideas are coming out of what is being heard and truly listened to when we come and speak, whether it be at these meetings, at our private closed-door meetings, whether it be community members, BEA representation. But we, as OSEA, feel like we have a power and a voice that is heard from many different departments, many different areas in BSD, and we are very, very appreciative and thankful for that. We, I don't think I ever thought we would have so many spaces to be able to try and share, and as many times as I feel like we're always coming up with things of, oh, but we can do better. We do appreciate having that space, and we do try our best to come up with ideas, not just come with complaints. And we very much feel heard in whatever that we have to share. Like Lindsay said, many of our students on IEPs, many of our staff working in or in support of our specialized programs, we're struggling. We need more supports, and there's a lot of kids, students, families, and educators that are in the early process of eligibility and support or in finding the way of what they need, whether it be 504, IEP, specialized programs, excuse me. And it's hard, but we're doing our best, and we are excited about these new changes, these new allocations of staff, and we are feeling very heard about the idea of training. But a big worry from classified staff, and I know our partners in BEA, we can hire really nice people, really great people that pass all the checks and balances, but where's the training that we need them to have? Because, yes, we can help support them, but our staff's job is not to train their peers, not, and especially not to train people above them either. And that's something that a lot of our staff are really feeling with the weight of the last two years. We recognize in our district, we've had a lot of change, and in change is really good things. There's a lot in that green area of new that we've been able to open doors and widen paths, and these are all great things. But the reality of classified staff training their peers and people above them, around them, it's a struggle, and it adds to the everyday chaos. So we just really want to emphasize that we would really appreciate the continued collaboration and hard work to get our staff trained as they're coming in or in their initial months, not three, four, six, nine months after they've already been doing the job. Because we, like our students, we all need routines. We all need the time to learn the appropriate steps, and it's a lot harder to run it back and correct that behavior than it is, or to change it, or to improvise, or to add to the skill set if we do it more proactively versus retroactively. There's a million other things I want to say, but I'm going to wrap it up. I want to shout out to every single one of our classified staff that are continuing to show up, show out, and work so tirelessly every day for themselves, their students, and our communities. I want to shout out specifically to a few positions that we are working with, and I promise this is not meant to discredit all the other amazing classified staff, but a huge shout out to our ECCPs, which are pre-K support staff. Shout out to our TIA's, our technology staff, and our LM. They're LMAs. I refuse to call them LMAs because they're not assistants. They are library media staff. They run our libraries. I want to shout out to them. Yes. I can't call them LMAs. They are not assistants. We, as educators, no matter what level you fall into as a category, whether you're at the board level, you're an executive admin, you're a classified staff, you're a specialist, you're a teacher, you're the volunteer parent. We appreciate you, and we see that our library media staff are the ones. We can't just, we have to, we have to love reading so that we can love learning, and we cannot love reading if we don't have our dedicated library media staff. And as of now, they are overworked, very underpaid, and very undersupervised, but they show up and they do it big for our students every day. From the early, the elementary levels, when they're doing book fairs and OBAP, on top of running a class for every single classroom in that school, learning every IEP, whether it's our secondary programs that are having to help support our technology staff in resetting district-wide's worth of passwords. And also shout out to all, everyone in IT for all that work because that was insane. We appreciate you. Just a shout out, and we, as OSEA, are coming out with a campaign that we love our library media staff. We have stickers, we have posters, we have rollouts to really make sure that our students can help advocate for the hard work of our library media staff. So that's a big shout out to them. And for everyone, OSEA, BEA, admin, school board, whoever you are, please watch out and remember to support all classified, but especially our library and technology staff that run a rotation with certified teachers despite having all the duties and the minimal pay of classified staff. Again, thank you. Shout out to classified staff. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chrissy. It's now time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when members from our public can comment to the board, and the board will be actively listening, but will not be able to respond. but we're, will not be able to respond or answer any questions. We appreciate you all being here today. The board welcomes public comments virtually or in person from up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting. And when more than 10 people request to speak, priority is given to students, district residents, speakers who have not already provided public comment during the recent meetings in a variety of topics. And comments can also be submitted in writing. We have received four requests to provide public comment tonight. The four speakers will be Erin Baker, Alex Thomas, Kim Douglas and Karen Mather, Mather or Mather. Only the people I name can, um, are allowed to come up and speak. Each speaker will have two minutes to share your thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person. And we have a timer on the screen. And when your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned on and you'll see those in the middle are turned on and are green. And the school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. This means that we'll end your testimony if you name a staff member, a board member or a committee member by name in your testimony. Personnel matters and complaints should be resolved by communicate, communicating directly with the employee, the supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior and remember that we must, that we have students and as well as staff and community here in person and watching online. Our first speaker is Erin Baker. Can you please come up to the front of the table, front table here? Please take a seat in front of one of those middle microphones. And then Alex Thomas, you'll be the next speaker. And after that, Ms. Baker, or after that, Ms. Baker, please come forward after that. And, see again? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Erin Baker. I'm a parent at Raleigh Park Elementary School with a second and a fourth grader, and I'm also the current treasurer. Reciting facts and test scores is not irrelevant, but redundant. There are published and known gaps which do not need additional focus groups or brainstorming sessions to uncover. The funds allotted to the state for literacy and to BSD is also known. Our current fourth graders are the incoming kindergarten class when COVID first hit. Waiting another year to deliver curriculum, provide training and implement better literacy materials to our students is unacceptable. Each grade approaches a year closer to middle school and a year farther behind. Please explain to me how a student that cannot properly read is supposed to log onto Dreambox and spend 20 minutes learning math. How do they complete their Find Three Big Things Science questionnaire after a video when they cannot read the questions to understand how to answer them? We aren't putting our students in a position to feel good about themselves and to succeed. These deficits not only have educational impacts, but also social and emotional ones. Without supportive action this school year, you as the board are sending a message that this school year doesn't matter. We just finished fall conferences and curriculum evaluations. We talked about where we've come from and where we plan to be at the end of the school year. Improvements in learning don't take a full year to achieve. Raleigh Park PTO bought materials to support UFLY in our classrooms and trainings for our teachers. We know change is necessary. Our teachers are committed and our students are here now. I have two with me tonight and I'm not giving up on their school year. My ask is this: We need more coaching support. How are you going to free up existing reading coaches' time to properly work with the teachers, to train them, when our existing reading coaches are spending half their time working with our struggling readers? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alex Baker. Is Alex here? Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Alexandra Thomas and I am a speech and language pathologist in the district. This is my seven, uh, eighth year in Beaverton School District. And I am speaking on behalf of the SLP team. For our students to know that they belong, for them to believe and know that they can achieve their dreams, they must also be heard. Each and every student has a voice, a message to share with the world and all should have meaningful access to communication supports. The 57 speech and language pathologists in Beaverton School District work diligently every day to ensure that each one of the 2,500 approximately students who receive speech and language supports can access their education and can express themselves freely and without judgment. We do not simply teach speech sounds or social communication. It's much more than that. We consult, we evaluate, we research, we analyze, work directly with families, provide behavior supports. Without adequate SLP staffing, our students, families and teachers cannot receive the supports that they need and deserve. Since 2021, approximately 25% of our speech and language pathologists have resigned, not including retirements. Nine schools have been left without a stable SLP for at least one month. Over the past two and a half years, we have had to hire 23 contractors, 14 of whom have performed their duties via Zoom from across the country. This is not best practice. We're losing SLPs because our workloads are unmanageable. We are asking for caseload caps of no more than 40 students per SLP so that we can give them what they deserve.
Thank you, Alex. Um, Kim Douglas is up next.
Hi there. My name is Kim Douglas. This is my 12th year as a classroom teacher in the Beaverton School District and my 11th year teaching first grade at McKinley. I'm here to speak about the district's decision to transition McKinley to a dual-language school. I'm not here to speak out against the dual-language program itself. I am, however, extremely disappointed in the way that the district came to the decision to bring this program to McKinley and feel that it's not the right fit for our school. McKinley staff learned that our school was chosen for the DL program based on the fact that it had the capacity to house the program, its location within the district and the number of current Spanish-speaking students at our school. Last year, parent interest regarding DL was solicited district-wide. 9% of McKinley families indicated an interest, with only 11% of our families completing the survey. The district has not gathered a significant response to make a decision of this magnitude with confidence. Additionally, McKinley currently has a mobility rate of 22.5%. We have been in the top three for mobility among elementary schools in our district in five of the last six years where mobility data is available. Mobility is at the forefront of our staff's concerns about bringing dual-language to McKinley. We're worried about the continuity of language instruction within the DL program with what can often be a revolving door of students. We are worried about class sizes and balancing workloads. We're worried about creating balanced class cohorts in both the Spanish and English tracks at each grade level, carefully considering academic skills, social emotional needs, friendships, IEPs, 504s and more. We're concerned that there is no class size cap for the English or Spanish track classes and what this could do to class sizes in a school with mobility such as ours. In closing, I'd like to ask that in the future, on behalf of other schools, that the DL school selection process be more transparent with more collaboration with the school staff and community. On behalf of McKinley and our future, I urge the board to strongly reconsider the placement of this dual-language program to a school with lower mobility rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening and thank you for providing a platform to share our concerns. My name is Karen Mather McCallum. My husband, Rob, and I are parents of a fourth-grade student at Raleigh Park Elementary. And we continue to be concerned that the plan to improve reading proficiency in the Beaverton School District is completely ignoring our fourth and fifth-grade students. We appreciate being allowed to sit in and listen to the planning session and to access the agendas and proposals online. After reviewing the proposals and the statistics, there's a glaring miss in the support plans for our current fourth and fifth graders. 61% of the current fourth-grade class at Raleigh Park were not proficient readers in third grade. 73% of the current fifth-grade class at Raleigh Park were not proficient readers in third grade. There is no support outlined in your plan to address this immediate need. I'm astonished that two entire grades are being allowed to fail with no additional support when you have the data and the dollars to help this year. House Bill 3198 allows for up to 20% of the total 2324 grant to be used for fourth and fifth graders. My ask is that this is used in full with urgency. Literacy in our schools need to be addressed both in the short and long term. We have confidence in the board's ability to approve a sustainable long-term plan. Our ask is that a short-term plan be put into action immediately in January to address our fourth and fifth-grade students. Thank you.
Thank you all for your, for your comments. We'll now move on in our agenda to items for information. Our first topic is an update on the middle school schedule presented by Deputy Superintendent Dr. Heather, Heather, uh, Heather Cordy, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Administrator Jill O'Neill and middle school leaders. If you can please come up. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Good evening, Board Chair Perez, Superintendent Balderez and board members. This evening, I am accompanied by several of my team members to share with you the new middle school schedule that will be implemented in fall of 2024. Just a few reminders about the process and what has, has led us here with you this evening. During the '21 and '22 school year, various stakeholders expressed concerns about the impact of the current schedule. And we heard that input and then made a swift move after research to collaborate with Education Northwest to conduct a qualitative study. And that study started in December of 2022. And we came to you in September, September 12th and 26th for two different work sessions to share with you, along with our partners at Education Northwest, the results of that qualitative study. They provided several sets of data. They provided the results of the focus groups, the surveys, the conversations, and ultimately eight suggestions for us as we move forward in creating potential schedules to share with, with the superintendent. Tonight, you will hear about the process that has ensued since we saw you and met with you on September 26th. And you will also hear details about the schedule. And so this evening, I am accompanied by Jill O'Neill, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Administrator in the Department of Teaching and Learning, Joanna Castillo, Meadow Park Principal, and Jared Freeman, Principal at Conestoga Middle School. And so I just, I appreciate the work that our, our middle school principals and some of the assistant principals have done to come alongside Jill as she has led this process and really gathered input from so many different stakeholder groups. You'll hear more about that here in a few minutes and more details about what that process has looked like. So with that, Jill, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. We have, since we met in September, advanced the middle school schedule. We considered several things, but we were guided by the moral imperative in our equity lens as we designed and analyzed a middle school schedule focusing on the students. We also considered the strategic plan. And in the column that you see on the right, there's a table. We were grounded by the vision from the strategic plan of what we believe. And we found guidance in the key strategies from the strategic plan. We considered the Education Northwest study suggestions. And we recognize that there are requirements with our bargaining unit agreements and with Division 22 reports. The middle school principals and teaching and learning staff, when we considered all of this input, the theme emerged that we saw regarding multi-tiered systems of report, of support. You may remember last year during the strategic planning process, in all four key strategies, the trend of MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, was repeated. That spoke to us. And we recognized that in evaluating middle school schedules, we needed to find a schedule that would support MTSS, not only providing embedded time for students to receive the tiered supports, but also intentional collaboration time for teachers who share the same cohort of students. As middle school principals evaluated schedules, one model stood out to them that would meet those requirements. Oh, could we go back a slide? I forgot part of that. When that schedule stood out to them, we brought in several middle school assistant principals who are the expert schedulers in the building oftentimes. And we had them run, design schedules with current staffing levels to see if the schedule would actually work. We consulted with the Equity Advisory Committee, with IT staff, HR administrators, the ELD administrators, the entire teaching and learning administrators, and also presented to the superintendent's cabinet.
As we looked at the schedule, that we decided there were several advantages that stood out. Ms. O'Neill already spoke to the embedded time for multi-tiered systems of support to happen within that schedule, as well as the team structure and teacher collaboration that can happen as a result of the schedule. Additionally, we have some classes that will all be balanced as far as having an equal weekly average of instructional time. We are maintaining two electives that meet daily, which was a big request. And we will be offering a 30-minute lunch daily, which was part of the Ed Northwest study. A sample student's schedule, as you will see, looks closer to what our high schools operate on in that it's longer blocks of time. Most students will have two electives that meet daily in 42-minute periods. Here, you'll see those on both A-Day and B-Day, listed as Mini Block 4A and Mini Block 4A2 on the left and 4B1 and 4B2 on the right. We will have Language Arts, Math, PE Health, Science and Social Sciences meet on alternating days in 88-minute blocks of time. Lunch will be 30 minutes at all grade levels with a five-minute passing time to the next class. Our daily student transitions will have a good reduction from eight or sometimes nine down to five daily. And we have the opportunity to provide some dedicated time for tiered supports during WINTIME. You'll see that listed on the B-Day side of the schedule in block two.
What was WINTIME again?
WINTIME stands for What I Need and there will be a further slide that explains that.
Thank you, Jared. We looked at the schedule from the student point of view and now what you have in front of you is the, a sample teacher's schedule. In this case, it's a science teacher. And you'll notice on A-Day, the teacher has three science sections. And on a B-Day, they have two science sections and one period of WINTIME. In addition to lunch, they also have PLAN time. The PLAN on B-Day is an 88-minute block. The PLAN on an A-Day, for this example, shows a 40-minute PLAN time and a 48-minute administrative-directed collaboration time. This is the time that will allow teachers to work in data teams, teachers who share the same groups of students, to determine what the students' needs are, design interventions and monitor the student's progress before beginning the cycle again. It provides colla, systematic collaboration time for these data teams. It supports interdisciplinary teams with four teachers sharing five cohorts of students. It does reflect a slight increase from the currently, current weekly average instructional time for Language Arts, Social Science and PE Health. social science, and PE health. There's a mistake on there. It shouldn't say "science." I apologize. And then it also is a reduction of 110 minutes from the current weekly average instructional time for math and science. And this is due to this year, math and science in our current schedule receive approximately that much more time than the others. So in following the Education Northwest suggestions of equal class time for each classes, that's reflected here. Elective teacher schedules look a little bit different. Elective teacher schedules look a lot like this year. Teachers will have six classes that meet every day for 42 minutes, which is slightly longer than the average that they have this year. So in the schedule in front of you, you'll see mini-block 1A and mini-block 1A2. And that means, well, some students are in an 88-minute block. Another grade level's students are split into two classes, one for the first half of the big block, one for the second half. And they have the same, the teachers have the same class on A-Days that they do as B-Days. So even though the classes look like they're mini-blocks, there is not an AB rotation for them. So there's not a change from this year.
Dr. Perez, can you hear me? Dr. Perez, you had a great question on what is win. And win is what I need time for students. And it is designed with MTSS at its heart. It is dedicated time for students to, it is dedicated time with students' team of teachers. It allows with flexible grouping driven by data. MTSS supports to accelerate and deepen learning in all students. It also provides opportunities for us to continue providing SEL curriculum during that time. It gives us opportunity to demonstrate to students avid school-wide strategies. An example provided is if a student might need extra time in math, during win time is an excellent time for them to do that. If a student needs help with learning English as a second language learner, this would be a great time for them to do that, and it wouldn't take away from their electives. What it is not, and it's super important for us to consider, is it is not a free period. It is not free time. It is not study hall. It's intended to be driven by data and support students in the learning to access educational opportunities. Since it's something new and we want to be able to develop and allow staff to have professional development so that it's rolled out in a productive way, win time work group will be developed with outcomes and instructional supports. During our spring 2024 and pre-service of 2024, we will also be focusing on best practices for teaching in a block because our classes will be longer. Pacing is important, and other aspects like taking students' break during these long classes are also going to be important. So talking about them during pre-service will be important. Using data to drive tiered instruction is also at its heart, and we will continue to strengthen our co-teaching model.
So that concludes the presentation about what our new schedule will look like, and we would be happy to answer questions.
We haven't actually gotten that slideshow before, so you might have us, we might be asking you to go back in some parts because we didn't have that before. And I think Carrie was going to send it to us at some point. It's on Board Book now, so if anybody wants to pull it up, or you can ask them to move back. So anybody want to start with questions or comments? Okay, Melissa?
And I apologize too because I didn't get a chance to see it. And I kept turning around and my back was to you, and it was because I couldn't see it there, so I had to turn around. So thank you so much. I can't imagine the good conversations that happened for us to get to this point. And I can tell from how you presented it that we're kind of excited about the opportunities that this offers our students and our teachers to collaborate. So I can feel the excitement, and I am really excited about many parts of it. I did want to talk about the Division 22, is that right? That PE requirement. I noticed that in the schedule, like our former schedule, that PE and health are combined, right? And that makes sense. But I just wanted to make sure that, does that mean that we are really fulfilling the PE hours? Because they're not going to have PE every day. Do they alternate, like some PE for a couple of weeks and health for a couple of weeks? What does that look like?
It does look like alternating currently. And when we reduced the number of weeks, like we subtracted that out from the total instructional minutes and created a weekly average, we're still above the 150 minutes, yes.
Susan?
I just really want to compliment you on the schedule because it is really balanced. And it was what I personally would have envisioned happening. So I'm very grateful for all the time and work that you've spent on this schedule. And I, again, appreciate all the hard work there. I do have a question because, you know, the win time, what I need, and how that is defined because students are at different levels. And, you know, a student that might need, you know, extra supports, I can see where that, you know, happens. But a student that excels, you know, might need a different type of support. So how does that work?
Well, that's exactly what tiered supports are. We meet the student where they're at, and all students are supported in their growth. So for some students who are maybe currently working below grade level, they get support that accelerates their learning because they need to move at a faster rate than the other learners. For students who are at or above grade level already, they will be engaged in activities that extend and deepen their learning where they're applying the knowledge.
Related to this, but, and I love, again, love this whole concept. How does this impact the SUMA students? Does it, does the schedule impact them at all?
SUMA students are students of a school first, and they're served in the SUMA program. And they will follow the same schedule. So they'll have the same opportunity for interventions if needed and for growth opportunities during that time.
I have a question about electives. So I'm trying to understand, so they get two electives every day. When we went to the teacher's schedule on that one, can you walk me through?
Maybe one more.
One more. I think it was one more for the teacher. Can you just quickly, like, you said that, like, if I'm a music teacher, a band teacher, and I look at, can you explain to my, what my day would look like?
What's different between the A and B day is the plan time. That's the only difference. So if you think that in block, mini-block 1A1, I'm teaching sixth graders. And then I get a different group of sixth graders in mini-block 1A2. And the sixth graders I had in the first mini-block went to their second elective. Well, I've got a new group. And then in the mini-blocks in block two, I would have two groups of seventh graders. And then in the mini-block fours, I would have two groups of eighth graders. So I teach six distinct groups of students, but those classes are the same on A-Day and B-Day.
Is there, is, does, how does, does that impact the number of students they're seeing total? From like now, they're kind of going to be seeing the same number of students?
It doesn't. They're seeing six classes, so six cohorts, which is exactly the same that they see this year.
Cool. It's amazing that you figured out this puzzle like this. I appreciated that the students still get the two electives. I also appreciated that you're being really thoughtful about the professional development of the spring for our staff to kind of know how to do the block levels, but also the win time. And I'm wondering about professional development for our administrators. Or where, how are we supporting our administrators and implementing? I can just visualize the data and like trying to group kids and how often that's going to need to, like, how are they getting support for that?
Yeah, I appreciate that question and thinking about support for our administrators. And that will be a part of the comprehensive professional development plan. And when we work on our planning and execution of our monthly leadership meetings with building leaders, that will be a part of the planning.
And I know, one more thing, and then we'll hand off. But I also appreciate, you know, we know we have students that are not reading in middle school. We know that we have students that are struggling with math as well. So I appreciate having that win time and look to how we can continue to fine-tune that as we support our students. So I love that we're centering our students. And at the same time, it appears from this that we're also centering our staff and thinking about, one thing they've been asking for is that collaboration time. They care about our students, and they really, the past schedule wasn't allowing them to collaborate as they wanted to and knew they wanted to. So I appreciate that, too. So Justice, did you have something? No? Okay, Tammy, and then Ugana.
Hi. So when you guys presented this a couple of months ago, there were a lot of constraints and requests, and one of them was to keep two electives because there were kids in SED or in English as a second language classes. And if we went down to one elective, they would lose, they wouldn't have any elective. In this schedule, is it the case that if a student is an English language learner, that one of their electives will be that versus it being in the win time would be their English as a second language or SED class?
Our collaboration with the ELD administrator really solidified that there is such a strong connection between the co-teaching model and this schedule because it allows, the schedule allows time for the, both teachers who in a co-teaching model are working with students to collaborate during the student day, the ELD teacher and the general ed teacher. So when we think of a tiered systems of support, ELD students being in general ed academic classrooms and elective classrooms is a tier-one support that they should have access to. And I said electives, two electives. Some students need additional support. And so, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back. Co-teaching would be the tier-two support. But our beginning EL, English learners and our newcomer English learners, they need a little more. They need tier-three support. So that would happen during the win time as long as they need it. And when they no longer need that intensive support, then they would be regrouped into a different support during win time. For our special, our students served by special ed, the IEP deem determines placement, and there are varying levels of placements. So for a student who needs a 42-minute learning strategies class every day, that would continue to take place, take the place of their elective. But for a student who receives consultation support, that could happen during win time. For a student who receives speech services or psychological services, that also might best serve the kid and be the least interrupting to his or her day to take place during win time.
Ugana? And then Sunita?
Presentation, looking at this schedule, I'm sure it took a lot of work and effort to put it together. And you took the question right out of my mouth. I was going to ask how this schedule was going to impact special needs students, and I think you already answered that. So I'm going to go to my second question, which is on the sample elective teacher schedule. So when you, when you put, I do see here in A-Day, you have 48 minutes and 40 minutes for admin-directed collaboration and plan. And then on B-Day, you have it in one chunk of 88-minute time. So does that mean that on the B-Day, there's no collaboration needed? You only have the planning time, whereas on the A-Day, you have both the admin collaboration and the plan? I want to understand your thought process.
Sure. Plan time is a contractual requirement for teachers. And teachers can advocate and have the agency for themselves with who and when they want to collaborate with others during their plan time. Maybe they'll use that time for planning lessons independently, maybe planning lessons collaboratively, working with families. They could be responding to email during that time, scoring student work. That's their time. And then the admin-directed collaboration time is specifically for the data team process.
Sunita?
Thank you. This must have been a really big puzzle you guys did it. I'm sure the teachers are happy for the collaboration time. And we are still providing two electives, so that's really great. Two of the questions that I have. One is that last year or the year before, we implemented a social and mental health curriculum, which gave some time in the beginning of the class, school. Is that taken away now in middle schools?
It's not. It's still one of our curriculum enhancements. So the curriculum we use is character strong.
Right.
And we have some digital literacy lessons that are also part of our SEL curriculum. Those will take place during the win time.
Okay, all right. And the other thing is that the 110 minutes being taken away from math, already the kids are not doing so well. So is that going to impact or how are we going to make sure? Because I, I, I mean, that's...
Yeah, we recognize that we are going to need to work really closely with math teachers and our math teachers on special assignments to look at best practices and also reconsider the pacing guides for math. We also have win time to do math interventions for students who are not keeping pace. Even in the current time, they're not making the progress they need to on math. And so we're going to be able to design support systems for students during that time. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? And go ahead, Heather.
And just a couple of notes before we close this portion of the agenda. I just, first of all, around communication, just want the board to know that this evening, after, after the board meeting, after this conversation, there will be a series of communications that will go out to district staff explaining the schedule. There will be stand-up staff meetings, opportunities at all of the middle schools tomorrow morning with slide decks and information that Ms. O'Neill has already gone over with all of the middle school principals. So there's a very focused communication plan. We visited with our association leaders just shortly before the work session to share the schedules with them. And the last note that I would like to make is just around appreciation for Jill's leadership. As, as most of you know, she assumed this new curriculum instruction assessment leadership role on July 1st. And when she was named shortly before that in the school year, we immediately had her join our weekly Zoom meetings with Education Northwest along with Ken Struckmeyer and myself. And those meetings happened every Wednesday morning for a year. And Jill just quickly joined in as she was preparing to take the lead on this really important body of work. And so the grace with which she did that and her experience and expertise related to all things that our middle school has, and her relationships is just, has been, has been impeccable in leading this process. And the second shout-out is to our middle school leaders. They are such a strong team, and they came in alongside her all the way. And I would watch them and join in and observe the processes where they were putting those puzzle pieces together. So my appreciation to all of you on some really great work.
Yeah, thank you so much to all of those that have been involved. I know our middle school leaders, we've been moving your schedules around. So thank you for supporting our staff in that way. Thank you to our staff for, you know, voicing your opinions. The last two years, the last three years I've been on the board, from the very initiation of the change that happened, I was hearing from, from teachers and wanting a bit of a shift so that they could collaborate with each other and really center students' needs. And so this new schedule is not something that was done quickly. It was something that really took a whole, a time to investigate, to talk to the community, talk to students. It involved many, many people over the last couple of years. So again, and thank you for stepping up in these new roles and to our presenters today as well. So thanks, everybody. Our next agenda item is an update on the changes that are being made in our school bell schedule presented by Chief of Staff Carrie Delf. And you can start when you're ready, Carrie.
Good evening and thank you. So after a year of talking about making changes in our school bell schedules and several years before that of discussion and consideration about these changes, the district is moving forward with new bell schedules for our elementary, middle, high, and option schools. What comes behind all of this is very clear research that shows that very early start times for high schoolers and other adolescents have significant negative impacts for those students. They have impacts on students' well-being, their mental health, their attendance, their academic achievement, and that a later start time has, you know, correlating beneficial effect for adolescent students. The research also shows that we don't have the same negative effects for earlier start times for elementary schoolers. In fact, medical associations recommend that school start times for high schoolers be no earlier than 8:30 if possible. Some say eight, but, but 8:30 is also out there. So after a number of years of discussing this, considering this, setting it aside during the pandemic, and then hearing again a strong strain of this input from our high school families, our students, and from local pediatricians during the community input process of our strategic planning process over the course of the previous year, the district has worked to develop a plan that allows us to get our students to start high school at a later start time than we had previously and still get our kids to school. So the difficulty is that we can't just change the start times for high schools in isolation. We can't just move our high schools an hour later and make no other changes. And that's because we commit to getting our students to school across the district. We transport well over 20,000 students in our district, have that available to them on a daily basis. We transport to option schools. We transport to neighborhood schools. And we can't do that with a single run of buses. So our school buses go out in the morning and our bus drivers run a route and they drop kids off at school. And then they go out again on another route and they drop kids off at school. And they, they can do that a third time as well. And because of that, if we move the start times for one school level later, start times for other school levels have to adjust as well, and some will have to go earlier. So if we can take a look at what our school schedules are here, this is just a visualization of the scheduled information that you've seen and that has been shared out to parents as well. But it can be helpful just to take a look at it visually. What we see here is our elementary schools have two start times. They're staggered to allow for that transportation process. Our middle schools currently have two different start times as well. And then our high schools and option schools start very early in the morning before 8:00 a.m. That red line there is 8:30. That is the recommended start time for those older students. And there's, and it, you see it starts not at elementary schools, because that really is recommended for, for older students. It's for secondary students and particularly high school students. It's not a recommendation for elementary students because they don't have those same negative effects. This is our current schedule. And you see that our high schools and option schools start quite early and well before that recommended time. The new schedule that will be implemented in fall 2024 makes small adjustments to the elementary and middle school levels and moves high schools and option schools to much better correspond with that recommended start time to help our students have, hopefully, those improved outcomes that we see in the research that has, that has been established around start times for secondary schools. So high schools are moving to a later start time of 8:45. Option schools will move to a later start time of 8:15. Middle schools are nudged just a tiny bit to, I believe, the new start time is 9:30. And our elementary schools shift, shift about 15 minutes earlier. Some of those schools, we haven't worked out all the details of those transportation schedules yet, and it's possible some current early start schools might become late start schools or vice versa. But for the most part, that's a 15-minute change for the elementary schools. Now, we know that any change in school schedules has, has a big impact on our community, on our staff, and of course, on our families. One of those impacts is potentially childcare. This, this shift with moving elementary schools a little earlier in the morning and high schools a little later in the morning can actually, will take some of the pressure off that morning childcare time for some families. It may reduce the need for wraparound care in the morning or for high school students to be the care for their younger siblings in the morning. And the flip side of that is that it opens up a bit of a gap in the afternoon where there may be some greater need for childcare. So one of the things we're doing to look at that is we're working to be able to provide transportation, school bus transportation to childcare in the school boundary. So if a student is going to off-site childcare after school, that we'll work to be able to get them there on our school buses. With the high schools, we did want to note, this is new information, the, the high school schedule, we are, we are lagging behind other districts in doing this. California now requires it. Oregon, it has become typical. It is recommended across the country. So we took a look at neighboring school districts. Those two yellow bars you see there are our Beaverton School District. On the far left is our option schools, which start earlier than any other district in the metro area. These are 24 metro area districts that I looked up. We start at 7:20 for our option schools. And if it feels early, it's because it is. It is significantly earlier than other high schools. And our, our comprehensive high schools currently start also much earlier than many other schools in the, in the area. They start at 7:45. The only school districts in the metro area that start earlier than our comprehensive high schools currently are Gresham Barlow and David Douglas. All other school districts in our entire Portland metro area surrounding, surrounding Portland start later than, than, than BSD's current time. We will be shifting this coming year to be in the pack of, of what is happening with our neighbors and the start times for their schools. And if we look at the next slide, we also compared with the 10 largest Oregon school districts. And again, BSD and Gresham Barlow are the only two that currently start earlier than that recommended 8:30 time. So this change is being implemented in fall of 2024 and will continue on after that. We wanted to make sure to have a decision about this and have that information communicated out to families and staff well in advance of the start of the next school year. So we're looking nine months out in advance so people can make plans and make any adjustments that they need to in their schedules. I'll also say, we've talked about this with the school board before, but, but I'll note that this has been a, a significant process over the past year to develop a schedule that will work for the, all the considerations that we want it to, to get our high schoolers starting school at that later time in the morning, not have too much of an impact on the other school levels, still be able to transport our students to school and have a number of other benefits, including being able to have transportation available, available for other things. And that's been a large process. It's been worked through with our teaching and learning department, our transportation department. Craig Beaver is here, and he's done a tremendous amount of work on this over the past half year and year. And Dr. Carl Mead, who couldn't be here tonight, which is why you are hearing from me. So this has been a significant process, and we're happy to be moving forward with a schedule that we really expect and hope will have some beneficial outcomes for our students while minimizing to the greatest extent the negative impacts of having an adjustment. Change is difficult, but we do believe that this will be having a positive effect for our students over time.
Any questions? Tammy, Sunita? Go ahead, Tammy.
I have a lot of concerns. And I think most of us, many of us maybe have heard from the community and they've shared their concerns. I guess one, I'm wondering if we've thought about, you know, what we're actually solving for with shifting the elementary kids is transportation. And is there another way, you know, the Portland public, school high schoolers use TriMet? Is there any, have we looked into having the public transit be our, our way for our high schoolers to get to school such that we could keep elementary and high schoolers starting at a similar time? And so that's a thought. The other, you know, people are really concerned about having to pick up their second grader, you know, at 2:20. And this is in the middle of their workdays. And yes, maybe getting them to childcare that they pay for. But also have we thought about, this might be an opportunity that we do partner with some of our community groups. Maybe it's THPRD that comes into our schools and provides free after-school programming that could kind of, you know, fill the void that these families are feeling as they're trying to scramble and figure out how to care for their, their elementary kids coming home so early. So I didn't know, you know, if there had been any additional, you know, thoughts besides just, you know, swapping the, the bus routes between high school and elementary because that feels like it's leaving a lot of families in the lurch. And I'm really curious what our Equity Advisory Committee has said about this and our Office of Equity and Inclusion. I would love to hear their thoughts because I feel like this is a huge equity issue.
Thanks. Good questions. Certainly, I should note that the change in the elementary schedules is 15 minutes. So that any time change has an impact for families and people have to adjust to it, but it is not a large change. It is a 15-minute change for elementary schools. There are a couple of school districts in the state. It's not common, but there are a couple of school districts that have waivers with the State Department of Transportation and Department of Education that allow them to utilize local transit rather than school bus transportation. Portland is one, Eugene is one, but do that. It does raise some equity concerns about being able to get students to school who don't have their own transportation and drive themselves. It can be done, but it, but it certainly has impacts, greater impact on students with higher needs than on students with lower needs to have them taking public transportation rather than a, than a direct bus route. So all of those considerations went into this process of developing a plan for a new schedule. And it, and it is a complex process. It's not simply a matter of pushing one lever and moving another. This was a process that we engaged in over the course of the last year and working with a consulting firm that does a lot of this work. And, and all of those things are taken into account. We have not solved and cannot solve for all of those problems, certainly, but they are ones that we are aware of and consider. So like I said, the child, the childcare, transportation to childcare is being taken into account and is being worked on with our school bus transportation, which is a help, but not, does not solve the issue for all families. And we do have childcare partners and providers in our community, but the provision of free childcare is not one that is readily available.
The Equity Advisory Committee and the Office of Equity and Inclusion?
Right. This was, this was discussed not in a, in a long, ongoing process, but has been discussed with the Equity Advisory Committee and the Equity and Inclusion Office are engaged in district groups that have been engaged in these discussions over the course of the past year and taking a look at all of these factors. They, they have weighed in on that.
Sunita?
Thank you. Thank you for, I'm glad that, for the high schoolers, that we are doing what the research shows and let's see if it helps them and, you know, to focus and study. Is there any recommendation for middle schoolers? Because they're starting quite late, 9:30, right? Is there any recommendation for them?
Our middle schoolers already start pretty late, and this adjustment in schedules makes that schedule go just a little bit later, but it is a later time. So middle schoolers are in that in-between age. They're not at that youngest age where the research shows. No, we don't really have big concerns about, about the kinds of negative impacts that we have for high schoolers. Some of them are getting up to that age where it may be there. And so middle schoolers being on the later side rather than the earlier side follows the research.
Okay. And thank you for the school bus taking the elementary schoolers to their daycare because it's 15 minutes is, you know, and I think that will help the parents.
Melissa and then Susan.
Thank you so much. This is a lot of work. And I've heard super positive feedback about the high school schedule, so much in support for it. And the question I am getting, of course, is for the athletics and the students who are participating. And I really appreciated the, the chart that showed all of the school districts in the metro area. And so have we seen, there it is, so good. Thank you. Have we seen any of our other neighboring districts see an increase in attendance issues toward the end of the day for student athletes who are trying to get to events? Or is everybody just kind of adjusting their schedule to accommodate and squishing it in somehow?
That is a great question. I think it's one of those questions that's going to be, for our district, that question will be answered as we implement this new schedule, what the impacts for athletic schedules will be. You don't just assume that everything shifts. If you move the start time an hour later, everything shifts. There might be more morning practices, for example. But what is typical for high schools around the state is to have a start time, you know, at or around or after 8:30 and not at the 7:20 or 7:45 start times we have now. And, and those districts do work it out with morning practices or with afternoon practices that start after the end of the school day. Where districts have to do long travel to the other side of the state, they typically do need to leave before the start of this, excuse me, before the end of the school day. That, that's not uncommon to lose some class time at the end of the day during the season and only for those longer away games.
Gustavo and then Susan.
Just really quickly, so the Metro League is really Beaverton. So Beaverton is the Metro League. We play ourselves during league. So we're very, very fortunate to be able to, to have us travel among our own schools. So we're not traveling, when I was in Eugene, I had to go to Ashland, I had to go to Bend, Lepine, and kids would, Metford. And they would miss a lot of time. Here, it's, we're traveling among ourselves. And again, the kids most impacted are typically freshmen that play the four o'clock games. So varsity, JV are a little bit later, 5:45, seven o'clock. So like basketball starting, varsity starts a little bit later. So it's really those freshman kids. And, but the four o'clock start time, those are the ones that are impacted typically most, really mostly around the winter time. But it is a Metro League, which is really fortunate because it's just right here.
If you're not driving to Grants Pass.
Susan?
So we have a couple of comments, and I know there's been a lot of work around this. So thank you very much to the team that has worked on the scheduling, including Craig in the back there. One of my comments is, my understanding is, in the Beaverton School District, it would be difficult to use public transportation because of the way, like, for example, unincorporated Washington County, the buses don't necessarily run where the school, you know, schools are. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, urban Portland is a lot different than suburban Beaverton. Maybe that should change, but it hasn't happened yet. It all costs money. And the other question I have is, you know, with the high school schedule, I mean, first, you know, I am a little concerned about, I understand that it's difficult because, you know, there's a limited amount of busing and you need to tier it. But a 9:30 start, even if it's 15 minutes later, is, you know, for middle school, you know, it's a long day and coming home at four, or leaving the school at four and probably coming home, 4:30, five o'clock is something I want to acknowledge because of the transportation time. Because that could be a hardship for families. So I want to acknowledge that. And then my, my actual question is regarding students that have a job after school in high school. And I, I guess this would be case by case possibly, but accommodating a student's schedule so they could make it to their job. You know, how, how are those things being thought about?
Again, I think that's a good question that will, some, some of which will be worked out in implementation. Student schedules, the nice thing about this is that this decision has been made well in advance of the start of the new school year. And so this isn't a precipitous change, and it's not one that impacts students' work schedules next week. So students will go into the coming school year knowing their school schedule, that if they are taking a full schedule, if they're taking a full load and, and having classes all to the way, all the way to the end of this day, which most of our students should be, that their day will go until, until that new end time and that that is what their availability is unless they have a special provision to have a free period at that time, which is not the norm.
Justice?
I mean, I guess only, I don't have a real significant comment. I do appreciate that we are, I guess I could say on behalf of my son, who's a graduate from the district, he would have loved to have started the day later. It was a significant challenge for him during high school with the start time and, you know, and, and the data. And scientists said for years that this is the time of day. I know it'll be a change, but I appreciate that we have a, a long runway to try to plan and help families plan to, to figure out how to make this work for everyone.
Ugana, did you want to say anything? So we'll go around Tammy and then myself.
I am aware of, you know, that been on the board for a few months now, and I fully appreciate that everyone in leadership is looking... that everyone in leadership is looking at every issue before us within equity lens, and I am so impressed with that. And we do have an Office of Equity and Inclusion, and we do have an Equity Advisory Committee. And so, from my sense of feeling like we have looked at everything very carefully for issues like this that I think carry a huge equity weight for some families, I really want to hear specifically what they say. And, you know, any caveats that they have that we need to, you know, yes, we know this is the right way to go, and we know this, you know, group might be impacted. It feels really important to me to hear from the folks that that's their only focus. So, I just, if there's a possibility of hearing from them on this, but certainly going forward, for me, every time we are talking about something that really impacts families like this, I specifically would love to hear from those two groups.
I think something that we've kind of moved towards in Beaverton is that we do have, like, the Equity Advisory Committee and we have Pat and Tatiana, but really that we've been working on a training of all of our staff so that all of our staff is really centering equity for our students. And then also using that equity lens to ask key questions. And I know, like, we were talking about the middle school schedule that was brought up and, like, really centering equity, not on two people or on a community, on a particular, like, group or two people in our district, but really, it's the responsibility of every single one of us on the board in our question asking, like, the questions you're asking, but then also every single one of our staff members. So, I know that as a board, we can ask for something, not as individuals, but we do have, the state has asked for the Equity Advisory Committee to give input on different pieces, and we'll be hearing about, like, what their, usually at the end of the year, there'll be like a report kind of letting us know on the different pieces. And I heard Carrie talk about how our Equity Office and Equity Advisory Committee have kind of put their voice in. And then another piece that I think that we've been trying to really center in Beaverton is to get input from our students and our families in many different ways and not just, like, a quick survey or, but really starting to hold space. And part of our strategic plan also looks at, how are we going to really engage our families in a really, like, thinking about the toolkit of engagement that the state has put out? And it's not just a survey, but there's like an actual, like, spectrum of ways to include our families. And we're going to, we're working as part of our strategic plan to really increase the variety of engagement from our families. So, we're hearing from multiple voices. In this work that has been done, in my perspective, about the schedule for high school, we're really centering student needs in the sense of what a high school brain really needs. And even with our option schools, I'm so thankful. I literally were waking up in my home at five, I'm waking my kid up at 5:30 in the morning every day, which means I have to get up before 5:30, and then getting them to school by 7:15, there's no way we could do it on a bus. And we do, like, I appreciated, we were hearing from our students and from our Merlot Station, they're bringing their kids with them to school on our buses. There's no way that we could get them there on a metro bus. Like, it's just, the buses here are really slow and they don't, like, aren't as consistent. I mean, they're, obviously, they tell us their schedule, but it's not something that's just easily, like, you can jump on and jump off at any moment or every 15 minutes. So, I really appreciate that we're providing that bus transportation for all of our students and centering that. I do think that, I know that in the past, Dr. Baldetis has been talking with THPRD, and we have those monthly meetings to think about, like, what other ways can we provide daycare, childcare, or after-school programs, or something that's really going to help and maybe even as part of our strategic plan, we have the Literacy Initiative, for example. Like, how can we really focus on some of those skills, maybe after school, and just start to increase those, that collaboration so we are providing things after school? As a parent of kids that have had them in elementary school, and that 15 minutes will make a difference, and we do have some older siblings that kind of take care of younger siblings. And so, some of those pieces will need to be worked out within our families and just thinking about, our staff also knows our families and thinking about, as they're figuring all this new scheduling out, how are we supporting those families will be important. But thank you so much for being so thoughtful in this process. Again, it wasn't a quick change. It's been something that we've actually been working on since I got on the board. But I know that Dr. Baldetis, it was something that was really important, to look at the research and center our students, and this is something that he just was moving forward with that research this last year and a half since you came on. So, I just wanted to say those things before we moved on.
Can you speak real quick?
Yes.
So, I really appreciate Craig Beaver and the work being done, our Transportation Director. I think there's no safer way to transport a student than a big yellow bus. So, I'll say that over and over again. There's no, they're built like a machine, I mean, it's a tank. But I know I have worked in a district that had public transportation for our high school students, and it was difficult for our high school kids when I had an hour and a half for our kids that were parents to transport from one end of a school district to a community college where we house our alternative ed program. But can there be, I think the variables, buses. The variable's always buses and bus drivers. So, I think something that we can always look at in terms of, hey, we want to decrease and move the times around, is look at the variable. And that is add more buses, add more drivers, and adds more cost to the general fund. It does get reimbursed, but again, it's something that I think we look at all the variables and look at, you know, what can be changed. I'm looking at Mr. Beaver there, eyes closed because I know that he's going, but it's something that we can look at because it's also, where do we store these buses, these big yellow things? So, it's something we can, again, can continue to look at for the board consideration for the community, because again, I think every parent would want kids to be dropped off and picked up at the same time. I think that's the goal. I think, you know, I know Mr. Beaver's probably done the math already in the back pocket in terms of what that would cost, and we can get that to the board as well. So, thank you, and thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. And our next items, Department Report from Nutrition Services presented by Administrator Charity Rawls.
Good evening, Chair Perez, School Board members, and Superintendent Baldetis. My name is Charity Rawls, and I'm the Administrator of Nutrition Services. I want to thank you for the opportunity-
Could you pull your microphone just a little bit closer? It's hard for me to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and kind of go over quick highlights from the report I provided and answer any questions you might have. I just wanted to first acknowledge the wonderful collaborative team I work with in Nutrition Services at Central Office that helps support our over 200 staff who work out in kitchens and do the very important essential work of making sure that all of our students have nutritious meals available every day in each of our schools. A few things to highlight from this fall, I just wanted to point out, that was my report. We, I feel like we did a really great job so far this year with our Farm-to-School Grant. We got $140,000 from the Farm-to-School Grant, that's usually a two-year grant, and we have already spent all of that money, which is actually good news because that allows us to apply for additional funds. There is a competitive Farm-to-School Grant that is opening in January, and we'll be able to apply for more funds. Talking to ODE, CMP staff, in the previous two-year grant, they had over $1 million that went unspent because people were not able to apply for that. So, we're working hard to make sure that we can get more of those funds to provide things for students that they might normally not get to see. So, this fall, we had Hermiston watermelons, plums, peaches, grapes, organic Honeycrisp apples, and Asian pears that we had on all of our salad bars in our cafeterias. And we got great feedback from all the students, staff, and parents on those. A couple other highlights, wanted to point out, our participation actually has increased, mainly because of all those grapefruits that were on our salad bars, but breakfast participation is up about 9% so far this year, and lunch is up 5% this year. And then one other thing that's been, I think, on a lot of people's minds over, I know for us and other departments the last few years, is staffing. And we have at this point in time of only about six positions that are unfilled, and those, most of those have opened up since the beginning of school year. So, we've added almost 25 positions this year compared to where we were at the end of last year. And we have great candidates that are applying for our positions this year. So, we're really excited to bring on these great new staff who have experience with nutrition and working in food service. A couple other things that weren't necessarily in my report that I provided, I just wanted to give updates. We are being reviewed by ODE, and they will be here December 11th for administrative review. That happens every five to six years, so we're well due because the last one was in school year 1718. So, they'll be here reviewing our operations, they'll be in six of our schools to see how things are going, and looking at all of our documentation and paperwork. We usually have very successful reviews, and I'll be able to report on that when they're done. And then one other piece I wanted to bring up, I know there have been questions about, is universal meals and where that may be headed in Oregon. So, we're calling it Healthy Meals for All. That's kind of the phrasing you might hear around that. So, primarily, there have been some changes, and there's a lot of different factors and moving pieces that might kind of put that puzzle together on how we get to free meals for all students. So, one of those is the community eligibility provision, which we now have in 15 of our schools. There is additional funding that we are getting from the state to be able to do that. So, their big piece is getting even more funding to be able to implement more. We have more students that have been identified as directly certified through the expansion of Medicaid students being identified, and that means that potentially, more of our schools would be eligible under the community eligibility provision. However, that will require additional funds from the state. So, that's the piece that we're still working on. I'm working with a committee that is presenting to the legislature during their short session about that topic in particular, so that hopefully we can push legislators into identifying more funds that they can put towards that. We don't think it will probably happen in the next year. It will probably be the year after when there will be funds potentially for healthy meals for all students. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Tammy?
Hi. You answered one of my questions. Thank you. Super interested in seeing how we, what it would cost for us to pay for all our kids to eat. So, my question is really around the environmental footprint of our Nutrition Services. I asked a handful of questions about this. I'm happy to hear that you haven't had styrofoam in the BSD Nutrition Services Program for a very long time. You know, and I did some on-the-ground research, sleuthing with several elementary kids and middle schoolers, trying to understand their impressions and their opinions about the nutrition services. First, there were no complaints about the food, actual quality of food, which was great. I took that as a high commendation. But they are concerned about, there's no recycling in the cafeteria, there is no option for composting food that's, you know, partially eaten. Their sandwiches all come wrapped in plastic, and they have individual plastic ketchup, they have plastic silver, disposable silverware. So, just really hoping that at some point, maybe we can have that conversation about looking at all of that and moving towards zero waste in our food services. So, you know, I've looked around a little, happy to share some resources, but I think, you know, we're probably not in the worst position compared to other schools, but we could always do better. So, that's where my heart is right now, is just wanting to understand how we can improve that over time.
Yeah. And that's something that we have been working on kind of over time. It's always a slow thing, and then I feel like it was a few steps back during COVID because, of course, then everything had to be individually portioned or wrapped, et cetera. So, some of the things, I think I answered some of the questions, and some of the things we're doing. We're doing lots of other things that we have implemented over time. So, one of the big ones, sort of the next step, is silverware and permanent wear for silverware. We have done pilots at middle schools and found that middle schools is not the place to start for that. So, we're kind of focusing on identifying additional elementary schools and kind of looking at, if you do all of the feeder schools first and then all those kids move up to middle school, then maybe it's not the, let's throw them all away or turn them into silverware animal kind of sculptures situation. So, that's kind of the one piece that we're kind of back to at this point, now that we're kind of out of COVID and people are not as scared about some of that. We do incorporate sustainability in all of our contracts as well, that you, some of the things you might know about. So, all of our vendors, all of our big contracts, we incorporate sustainability as one of the things that we look at. And so, we've identified a lot of the things and have done kind of a lot of things, but there's always, and food service is always going to be a hard one because of that food safety aspect and keeping things clean and all of that. But we, where we can, we do have green waste recycling, for your information, that we do, that's required in Metro, we're part of that. So, all of the back-of-the-house waste does get recycled and sent off, so that is happening. The front-of-the-house stuff, that is more difficult because that usually falls to, do we have a custodian who's able to do that? Do we have staff who's able to support that? So, there are a couple of schools, I know that we're doing that pre-COVID, but did have a lot of school support for that, so.
Ugana? Nope, you're muted still.
Question is around-
Go ahead, we can hear you now.
Okay. So, my question is around the free reduced meals. So, 15 schools don't need application for that. Is this something that would be applicable to all schools? And are all students qualified for free reduced meals?
So, currently, the 15 schools, so, I don't want to get into too much stuff, I can give you more information about this, but currently, we use the 40% identified student percentage is what we need to have in order to opt in to the Community Eligibility Provision Incentive Program, because part of the program we're using, we get additional funds from the state. The USDA has lowered that percentage down to 25%, but the state does not have any additional funds below the 40%. So, if we opted in to anything below 40, the state will give us no funds additionally. So, the state currently is making up the difference. So, there's a multiplier of 1.6 times that 40% gets us to 64. The difference from 64 up to 90% is what the state is providing us to cover the difference for. So, currently, we will have more schools next year because we've identified quite a few more students to the Medicaid process. I'm still getting some clarification on those numbers because a lot of those students are listed as Medicaid-eligible but may not be next year because the state is currently recertifying everyone because they did not do that during COVID. And potentially, we could opt in a whole bunch of schools and then have to take them back off if we have to reassess next year. So, as much as possible, we like to avoid that, just creates additional confusion for families on who gets what and what they have to do to get benefits. So, there's lots of moving parts that will require more information. Some of that is funding from the state to be able to do that. So, we're waiting to hear if they can come up with more funding to help us out and kind of opting in for more schools. There are schools of ours that would, on the 25%, if we were able to do that, and the state came up with the $100 million-plus dollars they would need for the state to do that, we would have all schools eligible under the 25% right now. But it's that funding piece to make up that difference that we would need.
Thank you.
Sunita?
So, I thank you for the information that you provided, and I appreciate Tammy and Ugana's question, they were good. I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank you for the fresh fruit and vegetable choices that you're being given to the kids. I remember 20 years ago, there were not too many options for vegetarian kids, so thank you so much for that.
Yes. We're working on more plant-based as well for vegetarian options.
Thank you.
Susan?
Thank you very much for your presentation. You know, when I read your report, and, you know, I've been part of the School Board for a long time, I know that nutrition is kind of a profit. I'm saying profit in a strange way because it is, and I know that, reading your report, there's like an overage in terms of how much money is there right now, and you're spending it down. And that is mostly through hiring. Will there be a problem when that money is spent down, like, in terms of keeping that staff?
Potentially. So, that's one of the things we're kind of planning for, for at least the next year or two. Part of the offset that will come is that we have re-implemented our à la carte sales that helps us in our budget overall in Beaverton. So, that usually is about 10% of our budget. During the last couple of years, we haven't been focusing on the à la carte or really providing them as much. We don't want to focus on it, it's just something that we also offer to help support some of that staffing. And to some degree, if we didn't have that, then we would decrease the staffing because we wouldn't have those, the need for those staff to be there. So, it's definitely a balance that we'll have to work through once we get through some of these funds and see what the future is, particularly with- and see what the future is, particularly with this all meals for all students kind of thing. Because if we increase participation, then that will help us with the costs as well.
I have a comment, do you? Okay, go ahead and then I'll go. Justice, did you have something? Okay.
The other, when I asked the kids what they drank with their meals, they kind of looked at me blankly and they're like, well, there's milk. And so I'm just curious about, and maybe this is, you and I could have a conversation offline about big dairy and why we're still serving milk in schools. And that there's no other option, you know, a couple of kids, well, I drink from my water bottle. So, and I think water is a great solution, but I'm just curious about what the kids are drinking, how much milk, and then also the waste that goes with individual milk cartons versus like having the, the big container.
Sure, so we, all schools should have water available. So water is required to be available for meals, both breakfast and lunch. So that's part of actually one of our bond projects, is to make sure that we have water filling stations and...
So they would have to bring their own water bottles?
Potentially, we do offer cups, particularly at elementary level, so they can ask for a cup if they need a cup. So we do provide those. So we have milk and the water available for all students. As far as the, I know a few years ago, there was a push for the kind of self-service style for the milk. I know some school districts went to that and hearing from our milk provider, all of those school districts have gone back to cartons. And unfortunately, there's not really a good solution around that one. It's kind of the same reasons we looked at it and didn't go that direction. It's additional equipment that you also have to maintain. There's workers' comp concerns, lifting twenty-two pounds to shoulder height or above repeatedly. Then the slips, trips, falls, issues with spilled milk, the cleaning, all of those items. So I agree, the cartons aren't great either and we've had supply chain issues around having those cartons available. But right now, that's kind of where we're at with that one.
I just wanted, first of all, I'm glad that you're like twenty-one years old and you're never retiring because I really appreciate...
Well, I really appreciate that because I've never, but I just really appreciate your thoughtfulness.
When we visited your Nutrition Services Department at the Capital Center, like just learning about your intentionality, about how you order and your team orders and thinks ahead so that our kids have what they need, even when there are shortages in the ordering of items. I just wanted to thank you for all that work. Volunteering in the cafeteria, I got my food handler's card and I was in the back, like actually processing some of the fruit when we had those shortages as well. Before school, I was like dividing up, I learned how to cut watermelon with the machines and all this stuff so that we can get kids the fruit. Really excited that we're increasing our staffing so that our, it decreases the pressure on our, on our staff and it allows, it, they always made it flow. I don't even know how they did it when they were short-staffed, but our kids were always fed, there was the right amount of food everywhere. I really appreciated that. My kid is in school and she gets water, like she, she forgets her water bottle time, so she gets water there. I know that we were working on decreasing the amount of sugar, especially at breakfast, and I'm excited to see that we've done that and that we continue to improve in that. I've also really appreciated your thoughtful, and your team's thoughtfulness on trying out new items that are more kind of culturally responsive and that kids can identify from their home. And then I just want to like kind of remind the board, like we as individuals can't ask you to change something. But if there's something that's really important to us as individual board members, we can bring that up to the board and as a board, then we can actually say, hey, let's think about this and then make a team to kind of go at a special issue that we want to work on. I know that we have a team that looks at just our environmental footprint as well, so maybe we can have a work session on that, on that work so that we can kind of continue to learn about what we are doing, not just in Nutrition Services, but as a whole entire district to really, I know that's really important too. We have a group of students that is coming, that we're going to be meeting with on looking at our environmental footprint and, and those pieces as well, but just wanted to name those things.
So I was going to just say that, we have a group of students, climate clubs, climate kids from across the district that we've been meeting with since I arrived here last year. Spearheaded by a student from Sunset, actually. So, and we're going to be continuing to meet and see if we can bring forward a work with the students and parents and, and the board on a possible creation of a policy. So that's, that's on the line for this year. So we want to let the board know that we've been meeting with the kids for a year, we want to bring that forward and working with the board in terms of what, about process, about process, so.
But thank you so much for your work and your staff and all that you're doing to make all this work for our students and keep them healthy and, and learning. They can't learn if they don't have the food that they need, so thank you. Our next item is our Student Investment Account, the annual report presented by Executive Administrator Dr. Josh Fritz.
Good evening again. See if we get up there, all right. This evening, I will just be covering our Student Investment Account Annual Report. I believe you've all received the report, it's also for our public, it's available on our website. This is, seems a little backwards because I'm closing out the annual report for the last grant and later, I'm going to come back to about the new grant that we finally have. But part of the Student Investment Account requires annual reporting out, both at the board meeting and then also making that available to our public on our website and we'll have a copy here in the district office for folks that may want to look at that. Go ahead, next slide. So our 2022, 2023 school year, we used Student Investment Account Funds to focus on three outcomes. And those outcomes are listed there, but essentially what it is, is increasing the percentage of students reading at or above grade level in grades K through five, and closing the gap between focal group students and non-focal group students. That incorporated a number of things, some of the things that we were actually mentioned earlier in the work session. Professional development for teachers, professional development for some of our elementary administrators, our academic coaches at our elementary schools, some dyslexia materials. There's a number of things that are kind of outlined in the report around what that actually looked like. Outcome two was increasing student attendance, mental well-being and attachment to school. And we all know this is an area that's really critical for our students and our families and we continue to work towards this. But really what that looks like for us as a district is a lot of our BH&amp;W, our Behavioral Health and Wellness Team staffing that was supporting students was coming out of our Student Investment Account. Outcome number three was focused on increasing the ability of staff to implement culturally relevant instructional practices. And we've mentioned earlier this evening, our Office of Equity and Inclusion. Part of that work that occurred was, we had a number of staff that attended equity training last year. As well as over the summer, we partnered with West Ed and we had a number of administrators as well as facilitators, teacher facilitators from each of the schools, participate in training to be able then to roll out what we are doing now, which is the Oregon Department of Education Equity Modules, and so that was a piece of that work as well. Next slide. One of the pieces that we have to report on annually is what barriers did we find? I don't think this comes as any surprise to anyone. One of our challenges was quite, quite honestly staffing and substitute shortages. So when we're talking about providing professional development, we had to get very creative in what that looked like, which is why when I talk about some of that equity training happening over the summer was we just frankly weren't able to cover teachers and have that happen during the school year. And so we got creative and then stipended or paid for teachers to do that training over the summer. Next slide. And then one of the pieces that is important just is to look at what we have used those funds for. So total expenditures were just over thirty-one million dollars last year and pretty equally split between our two goal areas. Goal one there, you see, is increasing academic achievement and reducing academic disparities. That included everything from additional classroom teachers. Really, that was a large investment for us and so we spent fifteen million, roughly fifteen point three million on that. And then goal two was that a goal around addressing students' health and safety needs and roughly about the same amount there, fifteen point six. Any questions that I can answer? Next slide.
I just wanted to say, I know that for something that like Lindsay brought up and our teachers have talked about is addressing student health and safety and just wanted to point out you know, like there's still a lot of work to do. And at the same time, when we have money, for example, the SIA account, we're investing fifteen million dollars in, in addressing student health and safety needs, knowing that we have more work to do, but that we do take this seriously for our staff and our students. And this fifteen million is including college and career counselors, nurses, MTSS TOSA, social workers, student success coaches, psychologists, resource room, SLPs. We've been hearing about them and their caseloads. Counselors for middle schools, cell behavioral PD, the NAMI partnership, I mean facilitator. So there's, we do take it seriously, we're listening and knowing to how else can we improve. Also, that goal number one in the other fifteen million, looking at how we're kind of trying to equity-based classroom investments for K-12. And then add, on top of that, the four million for K-2, knowing that our kids, and we've been hearing from our parents, like we have thirty kids in my class or at this school or that school, and also thanking our community. Because on top of this, it's like you were talking about that braiding that happens, right? And on top of this, we have our levy that our community passed that includes giving us, being the ability to put in, I keep forgetting the number, two hundred and ninety...
Two eighty-six.
Two eighty-six, two hundred and eighty-six teachers this year, right? Like we're putting, braiding these investments and then also for that early literacy piece. It was one of the goals on here. So it's, one of the things we talked with Mr. Schofield about our finances at the end of the year report, the budget, is somehow figuring out how to explain at the back of that budget, how we're actually putting all these, braiding all these funds to show a picture of how we're really trying to address our strategic plan and those key initiatives with this braiding of funding. Because otherwise, it, people might from the outside think, well, you're only putting X amount here. But when we look at the bigger picture of our budget and how we're braiding all this stuff, it actually is like a chunk going to safety or a chunk going to reading or, but I think it'll be helpful to see all that braided, spilled out. Susan?
I appreciate Josh, the SIA report. I do have a question because, I mean, this doesn't really talk about the impact on our students in terms of, you know, especially those most marginalized students. And I'm wondering if there, I mean, it's been, I mean, I know COVID kind of messed up everything and there's a delay and there, we might not have those numbers, but is there a possibility of seeing the impact of the SIA dollars and what it's doing?
Yeah, that's a really great question and, and actually I'll get, normally I would want to talk about the grant and then talk about closing out the end of the year. So this is a little backwards, but that's a really important point. So when the original SIA plan rolled out, it was pre-pandemic and it was supposed to come with those growth targets, as they're referred to, and looking at all of that. That actually didn't happen in this last biennium or this actual last round of this grant because everything was set aside by the state because of COVID. And recognizing when we look at statewide assessments, how many kids actually didn't engage, just all of, all of those pieces, right? When I come back later and I talk about the new grant agreement, what you will see is now that has been embedded in. And so we actually have reporting targets that we have to, to hit around a number of areas. Everything from literacy for third grade to fourth, four-year graduation rates, five-year completion rates, those sorts of things, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Josh. We now have monthly financial report from Associate Superintendent Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Perez, members of the board. I'm going to go easy on you tonight since I wandered you through a two-hour budget trail a couple of weeks ago. I will tell you that included in your normal reports are all of the general fund activity reports, investments, class size reports. So all, you have all of those. On the general fund forecast, nothing has changed, we've left it alone. It'll probably be left alone next month as well. You're probably wondering, how can we do that when we know we're investing in staffing right now? What we don't want to do with your forecast is have it kind of whipsaw back and forth month to month. So we're going to let some data flow, little bit of water flow under the bridge and then we'll start giving you those updated estimates. So look for more updates primarily around revenue after our property tax collections, which are coming in right now. So we'll have some updated revenue stuff probably in January and we'll update the expenditures as well in January because we will have begun to do some of that hiring and we can make better predictions then. So we didn't want to full-on change the forecast now and then, you know, kind of whipsaw it back and forth. So we've left it unchanged this month and as I prepared for the next board meeting, the financial forecast, again, today, we prepared it. It looks similar to this for next month as well. So I have that for you. One new report you have in your document is right after the general fund activity report, is a grant report. And this is our first attempt at giving you a grant report to give you some information and idea. And the way we've organized it is we have the award amount for the current year, what, what we budgeted and where our actual expenditures are, and we've broken it down by federal, state and local. This is not, I, I will tell you, this is not comprehensive, right? Like, so our grants, the, the way I tend to talk about them is more like projects. So for example, we'll have a Title I grant and it'll have a grant award that's well beyond a year or allows for the provision of carryover from one year to the next by a certain percentage or an allowable percentage. And if I gave you the report that has the exhaustive list, it'd be seven or eight pages. And I think that's probably more than you want to see. I, I would look to, I would have you look to this to say, kind of where are our resources coming from? Not the exact detail of everything, we'll give you that next week in the act for that'll tell you exactly what we got in federal and state money. We can point that out to you in that report. This is more of a guideline of what's been awarded this year, how things are looking, what awards are left out there, where we've got budget that we haven't gotten an award yet. Various agencies award at different times, you see where we are with discussions around the early learning money. You've seen where we were with SIA and getting that award done as well. So it's not as simple as just saying, give us all of our grants and hand it over, but this does give you a look at where we are right now, what we budgeted for, what we've been awarded. And we'll update this for you every quarter, just, just as a point of reference for you, if that makes sense. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Oh. Melissa?
And then Tammy?
No, just Melissa and then myself.
I, and I had asked this question actually of Josh beforehand and I'm just curious about that. The process of getting the grant funds, the SIA funds and other grant funds from the state level. And Josh shared that it's the depart, it sounds like it's the Department of Justice that's the, the hiccup. And I'm wondering, is, are, are we seeing any delayed or impact to our service to our staff or to our students because of that delay? And I'm wondering, is, as we're talking to folks with special session coming up, is that a place for advocacy for us to be able to say, please, we've got to do something better so that the legislative intent and the service offered to students and staff are matched and not interrupted? Are you seeing that interruption?
I appreciate you bringing that up. I know Department of Justice was a holdup in terms of getting the actual contracts written and approved around SIA and early learning as well. That's been an issue there. I will tell you, more, more disjointed for me in this process this last year for SIA was this idea that we had an SIA budget amount that, that I knew was going to go up. I think I mentioned it to the board when we adopted the budget. We adopted a budget that was smaller as required by the SIA guidance than what we would actually receive. I expected that number to go up. So doing that was one part of the, I, I don't think we had good numbers from the Department of Education that said, this is a good number, you can use Beaverton, you should budget based on this. So as you, as Josh just shared, we had around thirty million dollars in expenditures for the twenty-two, twenty-three grant. Our budget that we were required to budget to was thirty million dollars for this coming year. We knew that number would likely be higher because I saw, it's funded similar to our state school fund and I saw our per student amount going up. So if that's going up, I would think in the SIA it'd be going up as well. But there was no change to that during that process. So essentially, what we received is six million dollars more than what we had been asked to budget to. In addition to that, one of the other issues that came up, and I think you'll probably remember it, is we met in February to have a discussion about the SIA and the preliminary discussion and showing all the numbers. And it really caused us to actually make some reductions. And it really caused us to actually make some reductions in that budget before we were actually developing our own budget for the district, right? So we had this, we're following the SIA process and meeting their timelines to get it to you. But it didn't match up with our district budget process. So it looked like, oh, you're cutting these things over here in February when we're sharing it with you, when actually, by the time we developed the budget, we picked it all up, right? So we picked it up with other sources. So that was, that's a little disjointed for us in terms of processes. It could be a little, it can be a little misleading to our community and our public because we don't have these all aligned together so that we're putting our budget together as one budget. We have this process that's being run outside of that. So Dr. Potter, if I was to say one thing, that was probably the thing that, where I felt a little disjointed as we went through the SIA process.
Susan?
Well, that brings, that ties into, and, you know, just, it feels like a mandate that they have, it's disconnected, obviously. But my question is, then, how did you fund for the lack of funding that we kind of had with SIA? Was that through ESER funds? Because those ESER funds are going away. So I just want to, you know, reiterate that, you know, we have some funds out there that next year won't be there.
Yeah, and that continues to be the case. But I'll tell you what we essentially did is we moved some of those costs out to ESER, and ESER picked them up for this year. And then when we got additional funding like we thought we would get, we moved them back. So it's, again, if we could, if we could get it together and develop our budget in one methodical, thought-out way, it'd be a little better for us. But right now, we've got these state rules that are a little disjointed from our internal and external budget process in Beaverton.
The SIA is great, but would you rather not have it? I'm just tracking what you're saying, Mike, in terms of, like, have it part of our budget holistically versus this separate SIA budget?
I'd like it integrated into our budget process if we can. But I know the state has ideas about that, and there are strings attached. And there are reasons they put it out the way it is. And I know that the intent was to, when they went with the integrated guidance piece and took all these different sources and tried to braid them into one spot, they were hoping it would be more effective for schools. I've given ODE feedback, I'll continue to give them feedback in terms of how do we make it work for everybody? But there will be those requirements. But of course, we would like to be able to have the funds and just integrate it how we'd like to. But I get, I get the accountability piece and what the state's looking for as well.
And I know that for, when you gave us our budget methodology, like our packet the other day, you were, I really appreciate you, one of the things the state was doing was giving, they're restricted. The SIA isn't for every single student. It's restricted. And it was, I just, all the red about restricted of where we can actually spend those funds, I think, was very intentional on their part so that it really, in some ways, helps districts think about it with this equity lens, right? Like, of who we're actually going to be spending this money on, knowing that all students need support. So even though it's clunky, I think, in some ways, it's helpful. What I also wanted to point out was like, our contingency budget, like, the importance of having that contingency budget to allow us to have a smooth year, a smooth year in our funding. So we are not, like, dropping teachers here and putting teachers back. And then, like, you know, so it allows us to kind of keep that consistency for our staff. And I think that, and for our students. I also wanted to thank you for the eye candy of the grand, grant report. To me, it was like, eye candy, I'm like, oh, my gosh! I had never seen it in one place to really, it helped me make sense. And I know from the last couple of years that you never leave money in, like, we spend this money down. When I first looked at it, my heart was like, oh, my gosh! We have all this money we haven't spent. It's already December. But I know from working with you, by the end of the year, all these pieces kind of come in place and we show how we are actually spending it on our students. So I tried to just take a step back, and I appreciated you noting that, too.
Happy to help.
Okay, thank, oh, Sunita?
Want to thank you. I know that SIA process is very applying for it, and it's a lot of work. But this is a better place to be in than the last time, right?
You got that right.
Yeah. Because last time, we got less than what we expected. This time, we got more, and I would always want that.
Yep.
So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Our next item up is our consent agenda. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
I don't see Ugana. That was a yes from Ugana as well on Zoom. So the motion to approve the consent agenda has passed unanimously. I'm wondering if anybody needs a little five-minute break before we go on to action? Okay, so we will take a five-minute recess and come back at around nine eighteen or nine twenty. Thank you.
Okay, we're calling the November 28th School Board Member, School Board Meeting back in to order at 9:23 PM. So we are now live and we'll get started. Our first item for action, we're moving into items for action. The first item for action is approving the grant agreement and growth targets for the student investment account. The district's SIA plan was approved by the board last spring. And the next steps is really approving the grant agreement before the district can begin receiving our SIA funds. Executive Administrator Dr. Josh Fritz is available to present some more information before we vote on approval.
Thank you. As you're all aware, the district submitted an application to the Oregon Department of Education for funding through the Aligning for Student Success Integrated Guidance for six ODE initiatives in March of 2023. While the application was approved by the board and later by ODE in June, before the district could actually receive any of those funds that are allocated through the grant process, the school board is required to approve the grant along with the established longitudinal performance growth targets, which are actually set in collaboration with the Oregon Department of Education. This is a presentation I was prepared to do last June. I think it's been on the docket every month to bring back to you. But as was referenced earlier, we have been waiting for our grant agreements. And yay, they finally came through last week. So that's why we're at now the juncture of presenting on this. And hopefully we can get the grant approved. In which case then I will load that up to the system tomorrow morning. And we can begin getting those funds that date back to last July. So again here, what I'm going to be doing is just providing a brief background of the integrated guidance grants, sharing information about our longitudinal growth targets. As well as then this will go before you all as a board to determine whether or not you approve the grant agreement. Next slide. Some of this is an overview for many of you that have heard this before. But again, I just want to highlight that this is a new process. In the past, SIA was separate, high school success was separate. The idea was that with the new integrated guidance, we would be able to braid funding together for each of these six grants that are up here. Now I would say it's actually seven because now we're talking about an early literacy success grant as well. And that will next round come underneath with these six, so there'll actually be seven here. Next slide. Specifically, the grants that are part of this are our high school success, which is focused on improving graduation rates and college and career readiness. It has limitations, it can only be used for students in what we call 8.5 grade and above, meaning eighth graders transitioning into high school. But largely it needs to be focused on our high school age students. The student investment account, SIA, which is what we'll be talking about, the grant agreement here. There are wider abilities with those, but there are still some, as was referenced in the earlier session, limitations to how those can be used. Largely that they have to focus on mental health, behavioral needs, and increasing the academic achievement for groups that have historically been marginalized or shown disparities in their learning. Continuous improvement planning, there's no funds that come with continuous improvement planning, but it is part of this process that needs to be embedded in here. And that is just that process ongoing of looking at our data analysis, professional learning, and reflection about how we are using funds to best support all of our students. Next slide. In addition to this is our Perkins, which is actually a federal fund, not a state one. And it was embedded into this process. And so it has some different timelines, but ultimately we were required to apply at the same time as the rest of these grants. That is specifically looking at our career technical education and how we can move towards high wage, high skill, in-demand careers. Additionally, then another grant area that isn't really a grant because no funds come with it is Everyday Matters. But we were required to also embed that in. And that is really looking at our climate and culture, that's the, that's our tagline, right? Belong, believe, achieve, and looking at attendance issues with students. And then last one, it's a small grant for us, but it's the early indicator and intervention systems. But that's really, it's about data collection and being able to have some funds for our system analysis when we're talking about data. Next slide. The plan that was approved last year before it went off to Oregon Department of Education to review and give us approval, it had some intended outcomes here specifically looking at increasing graduation rates for all student demographic groups, but also students in every focal and demographic group reporting an increased sense of belonging. That was actually, that came out of that strategic plan work that we did last year. We also know that when a student feels that they belong, they're, they're safe, they're able to better learn, and we see increased attendance, so that was tied into that. And then the third one, and this has come up a couple of times this evening, was fully implementing a K-12 multi-tiered system of support to meet the academic and behavioral needs of all students. We recognize that, as we should, over the last several years, we've been largely focusing on behavioral health and wellness. We equally needed to be focusing on academic intervention and supports for our struggling learners. And so that idea of a true robust MTSS system that focuses on academics and behavior. Next slide. Additionally, all students would be provided with rigorous standards based and relevant learning experiences. This was a requirement actually under this braided funding model, focusing on specifically accelerating learning opportunities. And so some of that for us in our plan looks like dual credit opportunities for our students and really increasing the ability for all students to try out and experience college coursework while they're still here with us to see that they're ready to do those things. And then the last one there was increasing the number of students prepared for post-secondary success through participation in our career technical education programs and really expanding those. Not just, not just continuing with our programs, but looking at how can we grow those? How can we market those to get to more students engaged in those? Particularly students that maybe historically haven't chosen those pathways. And so that's another piece to that. Next slide. Within that, we were then required to report out to the state as well as our community what the specific uses of the funds would be under each of those outcomes. I'm not going to read them all, we've been here, all of us have been here a long time this evening. This is just a repeat of what our plan is. And again, for our community, this is available on our website. We actually have a specific webpage devoted to integrated guidance and all of this is listed there. So next slide. The next couple of slides here, it just shows you some very specific kinds of things that we have put in place with this plan for each of those outcomes. Next slide. Yeah, go ahead and you can keep going, there you go, yeah. I don't think you want me to read all that to you. All right, so the next piece of this, this is new. As I referenced earlier in the first round with SIA, the idea would be that there would be accountability and districts would be reporting out not just on how they use the funds, but that they're actually looking at student data and ensuring that there was progress being made on those activities. That was taken out because of COVID. This is new this time around. Districts were then required to meet with the Oregon Department of Education. And as the final stage of the application process, to look at our student data across both holistically the district, but also within specific focal groups. And then within that, to establish those longitudinal performance growth targets. Those of you that looked at this grant agreement, they are embedded in there. So this is not just we get the funds to spend on things that we say we want to do as part of this plan, but what we are saying is that we will monitor those specific longitudinal performance growth targets, which I will share with you here in a moment. And that we will be reporting out quarterly on where we are in relation to those. And when we go to apply again, I want to say in four years, but it's almost been a year now before we've gotten the funds. So in about three years, we'll be doing this again. We will have to show to the Oregon Department of Education that we have met our goals or at least making progress towards those. So that is now a requirement. It's one more kind of layer to make sure that we are doing what is right for our students. Next slide. In addition to the longitudinal performance growth targets, we have a number of things that we're looking at here in the, in the district. And so I just want to ensure that you understand that there are certain things we're required to have goals on, and those are the pieces we'll be talking about in a minute. But we also, the group that met weekly to work on our SIA plan last year, realized we have a number of other performance targets that while they're not mandated, we wanted to ensure we were looking at as well as the district. And so those are some of those things that are listed up here. Next slide. Already referenced, it was a co-development process. What that looked like is we here in the district, the group that was working on our SIA work, really dove deep into our data and it was a really robust group of folks that looked at that data. And then we, we did what we thought was the best match. And then we had to present those to ODE. We met with ODE representatives at the Northwest Regional Education Service District last spring. And I'm excited to say that the group had done such a great job that when we, when we came in, we were actually told that that was a model for other districts. And we were surprised that we were only there about 15 minutes, which is, we'd set aside the whole day to do that. What that work really looked at, and this is different than what we have done in the district in the past. So often we look at our data and we say, well, as a district, what percent of our students are graduating in four years? As a district, what percent of our students are meeting literacy proficiency by third grade? We certainly had to look at that, but we also then had to do this whole piece around baseline stretch and gap closing, which is kind of a new thing to even be thinking about. But what that said was baseline, where are we at as a district for all of our students? Where are our focal groups of students? Are students that experience houselessness? Are students that experience poverty? Are students that may experience a disability? Where are they at? And how do we close that gap? That's what it refers to with a gap closing target. And then what are our stretch? So that was essentially saying, okay, well, as a district, we're going to work towards achieving a particular goal area. But if we really stretched ourselves, where could we see ourselves being? And what that's about is making sure that we are seeing the performance of each and every one of our students in the district and striving to make sure that each and every one of those students continues to move forward. Next slide. So we are required by statute to include a number of things. Four-year graduation rate, our five-year completion rate, third grade reading proficiency. Next slide. Ninth grade on track and our regular attenders. Those are things that were required to be embedded into the, the growth targets. And then districts were actually offered the opportunity, and this doesn't really apply to us, but some districts chose a local option measure because they might have had subsets that were so small that there really wasn't data to look at that. Obviously, we're a large district, we have large numbers of data. And so we were able to really focus on those longitudinal growth targets. Next slide. And again, as I mentioned, we didn't just set one goal for each area. We set four goals for each area. That idea of what's our baseline goal, what's a stretch goal, and what's a gap closing goal. So you're probably starting to fuzz over, but this was a huge project to have to look at what all of those are. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of this. But really, again, what this is, is that we need to be thinking about all of our students. Additionally, the state mandated that those goals address the historic trends, which was really kind of interesting to be thinking about. We were historically looking back prior to the pandemic because a lot of the data during the pandemic didn't give us quite the numbers that we needed to. So we had to do a historic look back. That's interesting at a time when a district is declining enrollment because we had to make some kind of best guesses based on what that data looked like. And then we also had to evaluate the likely impact of new or expanded programs. So obviously, we didn't historically have data around some of our behavioral health and wellness measures because we hadn't had those. So we had to think about what that looked like as well as looking at statewide averages. And really, again, what this is about is districts pushing themselves to get all kids to success rather than just simply saying maybe we're outperforming the state average. Next slide. So for us, what you see in that grant agreement is not just the dollar amount that we would be receiving, but you will see that we have benchmarks over the course of the next several years. This goes out through 27, 28. And you'll see it also reports then what our percentages were for each group for the 21, 22 school year, the five-year average, the five-year trend. And then it gets into what the target was set. Essentially, what this is saying is that over the course of the next several years, for us to continue to show that we are making good use of these funds through the SIA account, that by the 27, 28 year, our target is getting all students at a four-year graduation rate above the 90, 90% of our students. So it's, it's a pretty big goal, but it's important that all of our students are working towards that and that we're focusing our funds to help support them get there. The next area, next slide, is our fifth year completion. We know that there are some students that they don't graduate in four years. So another measure that gets looked at is our fifth year completion. And what this is looking at is that by that 27, 28, that we should be in the, for most students, above 95 percentile. So they, they don't say 100%, they just say we're going to have greater than 95% of our students completing high school within five years. Next slide. Next area, and this is certainly a big focus for us, and this is addressing attendance. We know that this has been nationally a challenge, but this was an area that's mandated that we look at. So you can see there what our trend has been the last several years. But then where we need to be headed with this, and this needs to be a big focus of us. As a district is working on getting our students to become regular attenders, once again, like they were before the pandemic, that by the 20, 27, 28 school year, what we would hope to be seeing is about 85% of our students are regular attenders. And you can see that we're right now in some groups as low as 50%. So we have a lot of work here to do. Next slide is our third grade ELA proficiency or English Language Arts. This is also, as we've already talked this evening, is a focal area for us. And this is partially why House Bill 3198 was put in place because all districts are looking at what can we do to support our students to be proficient readers by the end of third grade. And so as you see that, we, we have some schools, some elementary schools in this district that are currently below the state average of 40%. And what we need to be looking at is getting all of our third graders by the 27, 28 school year closer to 70% or mid 70, 70% of our students meeting proficiency. Next slide. This last area here is ninth grade on track. This has been a big focus with our high school success funds in the last several years. We have folks at all of our high schools that are working and leading this work. Teachers meet regularly, once or twice a month, to look at all of their ninth graders to ensure that our kids are on track because there's a lot of research about if your ninth grade year doesn't go well, you're probably not going to graduate on time. This is an area that is actually really a strength for us. We have, you know, currently we're sitting at a high 80% of our students. Actually, I think more recent data shows us even higher than that. What we would be shooting for then is a longitudinal performance growth target by 27, 28 to having over 90% of our students on track by the end of ninth grade. I know that's a lot of information and a lot of time. Part of it hopefully is just kind of a refresher of information we covered last year when the plan was originally put together. But I just want to make sure you have that information before you make a decision on the grant agreement. Questions?
We'll have Sunita, and then Melissa, and then Tammy, and then Ugana.
Thank you, thank you for this information. Lot of information even just to look at it and kind of grasp it. This grant is given every year and we set our targets. And the targets are looked after three years, right? Whether we reached it or not, three?
Yeah, so this is what's confusing is the grant agreement is for this year. And the grant numbers or figures that were referenced earlier are for the biennium, so it's a two-year. But the grant plan or the application that we did for the grant is actually a four-year cycle.
Okay.
So we're talking about kind of a couple of things here. We're talking about growth targets on down the road to 27, 28, but we actually have to report out on progress quarterly. Because this was delayed, here's the irony, we already had to do our first quarter report because it's a quarterly reporting system. And, and essentially what we had to say is we're still waiting for the grant agreement. And that has impacted being able to roll out some of the services and supports.
So, so when we get the money? We will reach our goals, but what if we don't? What happens?
You know, that's a great question. And I've been in many a webinar with, with ODE and that has come up from many, many districts. So what happens if we don't? And the answer that I've heard every time is, well, we'll work with you to get to where you need to be. So I, I don't know that there's a hard and fast answer to that. And I think it's kind of like much of these things, it's a moving target and being kind of figured out as we, as we go along. The expectation is for districts to really be thinking about their data and looking really deeply about where students are at and making adjustments to their plan. So if we're seeing graduation rates aren't going up, then we need to revisit and say, is this the right plan? Are we spending the money in the right way?
Melissa, Tammy, Ugana, then Susan.
I, really quickly, I just want to say thank you. And then I also wanted to, for the staff and everybody who put together the school showcases before, it's really helpful for me to have heard the stories from the principals. And I know we could have reversed the order, so whichever order it happened. But just to hear the stories behind the numbers that you just presented and to hear the school leaders saying, this is what we're doing in our building to address this, is really helpful. And it's, like, everybody has said it's very complicated, but hearing the personal stories behind it really helps fill in my brain of the picture of how this is coming together. So really complicated and appreciate all of the effort that has gone into helping us understand it better.
Tammy, then Ugana, and then Susan.
Hey, so looking at further back, earlier in the, in the slide deck here, the proposed plan and intended outcomes, my eye is always drawn to intended outcomes and very measurable, things that we can measure and we can look to and say, yes, we did that. So I'm hopeful that as we're looking, I'm looking at page 118, that we're going to be able to, you're going to be able to present to us, you know, the, all, the, kind of like the graphs you had right now. But additionally, the one that catches my eye over and over is our CTE programs. And Dr. Baldairis and I have been in conversation about this on a handful of occasions. I have thoughts about CTE and I think my understanding of how we do it now, it's just amazing. We do so much, so many different things, so many options for our kids to help plant seeds of like future careers and that sort of thing. And a concern I have is that, that there might be some, you know, bear barriers to entry that maybe weren't there when I was in high school and, and kids went to shop because they weren't really good at other things in school. But we all needed to have something to do after high school. And maybe those kids didn't have great attendance and maybe their scores weren't great and maybe their parents weren't really involved. So I want to make sure that our CTE programs that, that are attracting, you know, a wider variety of students these days, aren't leaving behind the ones that maybe we, and you even say it here on this, on page 119, with a specific focus on students who are underserved and underrepresented. So I would love to see the data on that. I would love to understand what, what, what are the requirements to enter CTE? Are there, are there, are there ways in which some groups are favored over others? And, and really wanting to understand the equity behind our CTE programs and to look at that data is, is something that I'm really passionate about. And then the other place I scribbled data, also, this was on page 123, where we look at wanting to increase access to accelerated learning opportunities for students historically underrepresented in AP IB and dual credit classes. So again, really love to see what our outcomes are because these are amazing goals and I, and I hope we achieve them all. But hoping to have the, close the loop on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ugana, then Susan.
Thank you for the presentation. A lot of info-
A lot of information tonight, and I want to ask questions around the goals. I mean, you have shown us the intended outcomes, and Sunita had asked what happens if we don't reach our goals. And I'm going to ask the follow-up question on that. How do we know when we have reached our goals? How do we measure the success of the grants? And how do we know we have achieved the intended outcomes?
Yeah.
So just how do you measure success?
There are very specific areas in there. So our four-year graduation rate, that is something that we have data on. What I, likewise, five-year completion rate, our Oregon statewide assessment, third-grade reading proficiency, those are all things that we have data on and will continue to gather data and look at. Next year, when I'm doing that annual report, saying what we've done this year with our SIA funds, that report will look different, because it will not just be a summary of how did we use those funds? This year, the reporting requirement, just here's our budget and these four questions that we reported on, right? How did we use them? What were some barriers to being able to implement things? What were challenges or things that we learned from? So those are the things we reported on this year. That will shift moving forward. We will actually then have to report out, here's our data for, say, for instance, third-grade reading proficiency on the Oregon statewide assessment for all students, for each of the focal groups. And how does that relate to where we were before we began using these grant funds? So absolutely, we will be looking at that. They are all very measurable things, and that's part of that, setting those longitudinal performance growth targets with the ODE, we're required to use, set things that every district has access to.
Susan?
I'm just going to be on repeat right now and just comment that, you know, I'm very appreciative of our local option levy that we have in our district, and I'm appreciative that the state has funded, you know, SIA, and we can help achieve, lowering that gap. But, I mean, I'm going to say it's not enough funds, and we're, you know, we're struggling with our kids being behind because of COVID. So it's more of a comment about, really, it's, I appreciate everything we're all doing here, but it's not enough really to support, you know, our youngest kids, our middle schoolers, and our high schoolers. So that's my comment.
I appreciate the comment, and I would just say, one of the challenges with carve-outs, like each of these grants, is there are so many strings, right? There are so many limitations, and our community doesn't always understand that. So like, back to thinking about our early literacy success, you know, when the question comes up, well, what about middle schoolers? Or what about, I mean, you know, fill in the blank. We have to, in order to receive grant funds, we have to follow the guidance and restrictions that come with those.
First of all, I, my, in my professional life, I work supporting districts nationally. And one of the things about high-performing districts, it's that their strategic plan and their school improvement plans and their funding is aligned. And so it makes me, it gives me a lot of joy that we now have a strong strategic plan, that our school improvement plans, when we talk to all those, all the school, we met with 18, at least 18, schools each of us, and looked at the school improvement plans over the last month, and listened to what their focus are, focuses, FOCI are. And they are focused on the same thing that you're talking about right now in this SIA plan. And so to see all, and we've been talking today about the braiding of that funding, and that's what's going to change that curve for us in aligning that professional development that we're talking about. So we continue to bring us together and to move us in the same direction, and that's what's going to change the dial for our kids and improve our reading scores and our graduation rates. So thank you to everybody that's been involved in that work, because that's crucial, crucial work. When I was looking at the four-year graduation rates and the reading part, I see that we have some goals for closing that gap, something that, as we move forward with those, I would love to see us to really name who our focal groups are, and that we actually track that bump that we're looking for, the closing of that gap on that graph with the actual names of the groups that we're talking about. I know that I didn't, I, one of the slides, or in one of the things we read, it talked about some of the focal groups, and you didn't list all of them, but it had some. And one that I saw missing was our English language learners. And I know that from our school improvement plans, when we were looking at that data, and when we were looking at the state data for each of our schools, and I just looked at 18, English language learners were amongst the focal groups that we really need to focus our energy on. So in the SIA plan, really does name those focal groups that we're supposed to. So as we move forward, if we could just really break down that information, and then that clarifies, and for everybody in our community, for our staff, and for us, as we're looking at where we're putting funding in or where the gaps are in our funding, to really kind of keep moving us in the same direction. But thank you for all that work. And I guess one more piece is that I saw, I'm still wondering, and would love to continue to hear within our conversations, where our dual-language programs are lying? Because I know we don't, we talked about, like, in the other plan, our Spanish literacy programs, right? Like, we don't have the tutoring for that. We don't have, and so I know that, you mentioned, we'll be building some of those, we'll be in the forefront of building some of those pieces. So as we move forward, like, just really helping me understand, or the board and our community understand where, how we're doing that, would be great.
Just really quickly to share, so dual-language programs is one of the things that's in the integrated guidance plan. I know that it's been so long ago that we actually talked about the plan. I just didn't want to inundate you with all of that. So on our website, I mean, you can go to Beaverton School District Integrated Guidance, there is a whole webpage, and you can, you can look at the application that was submitted, but also the budget for the 23, 24 school year and the 24, 25 school year. And because we knew that that is a focal group we need to be addressing, there is a line item in there for dual-language programs curriculum and instructional materials out of SIA.
And I guess one last thing would be, if we're, we talked about with the grant for early literacy, that we're providing certain things for all schools. And then, I don't know, maybe later in the conversation, at some point, we could talk about how maybe this is a way that we're actually adding to some of our schools that are having the lowest reading scores, for example. Like, this is to add as well as that, as we're braiding all this funding.
Right. Again, one of the other pieces is our academic coaches, and that was something new. This year was ensuring that all of our elementary schools had an academic coach, and that is out of the SIA plan as well.
I think we're moving into a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the student investment account agreement?
I move to approve the student investment account grant agreement as submitted.
I second it.
Hold on, I'm just missing my part here. And then we don't have any further questions or comments on that part? Okay, just making, I didn't miss a step. I think I was thinking I missed a step. All those in favor of approving the SIA grant agreement, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We, we pass, this passes unanimously. The motion to approve the SIA grant agreement passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is the board operating agreements. The board annually reviews and affirm, so this is something we're going to do annually, reviews and affirms and revises the board agreements that outline how board members will work with each other and the superintendent. Since we are fairly new board, we have intentionally engaged in multiple facilitated conversations in work sessions and board meetings to get this point to our current draft being considered for approval today. If the board is ready, we can approve the agreement this evening as drafted. Approve them, we can also approve them with some amendments or discuss final revisions and postpone the approval at a final draft at our next meeting in December. In order to open the discussion, do I have a motion to approve the board agreements?
I move to approve the board operating agreements as submitted.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Let's see, Tammy and Justice?
Yeah. Section D, letter B. You know, we've gone round and round about this, and I'm not comfortable with the language that we have substituted here. It says, "Board members will not directly contact other district employees, even if our previous relationship is established." That's not something that I will hold myself to, and I certainly hope that staff will feel comfortable coming to me, realizing I'm a conduit, I'm not the problem solver, and that that, that relationship's really important, and not only as, you know, I'm also their elected representative for many of the staff that will be reaching out to me. They often also live in the district boundaries, so I'm not comfortable with that section.
We have a couple of things we can do. Well, we can let Justice say something, and we can also vote to have an amendment to some, to be, because there might be other places that people want to change something. So maybe we'll let Justice speak, and then if you want to think about an amendment, or we can have Mike help us think of an amendment for the wording, that would be helpful. So Justice for now?
I guess my only comment was the, I think the clarification in the same section, but in section C in terms of if contacted by staff, there's clarity around process and being more precise, because it's going to happen, people are going to contact us. That's why we're here, and it's not avoidable. As all things that are agreements and are operational, we do our best to adhere to them. And I think the conversation has always been around, what are we specifically trying to do in terms of practice? And then what things are we also trying to, you know, business be very front and forward with the things that we don't want to do, which is, you know, the conversation of board and we're sort of trying to administer. And I think being precise about that is, is reasonable to me. I can, yeah, those are my only comments, so I appreciate us making those adjustments. If we can tweak it a little bit more, I don't know exactly what the other refinement would be, but I'll be open to the discussion.
I just want to point out to Shelley that your computer might be turning off in a second. But it says there's something turning off, maybe, perhaps. Okay.
If mine goes out, Shelley will jump in.
Okay. Just making sure. I don't want us to miss something. I personally also don't feel comfortable with DB and DC. I think we've talked about it for a while, and what we want to make clear is that we do, we talk to our teachers and our staff all the time. Like, I, we're in buildings, I'm in buildings every week, I get emails, I get phone calls, I get, I meet people on the way, and meet with Lindsay, meet with, you know, people to talk all the time. So I think that the way it's worded, it's still not quite what we're trying to say. So I don't know, I know that the first one, in my opinion, so we can, if Mike, I know we need to make a motion to make an amendment, so I don't want to spend forever on this. But if, the first DB, I think the intent of that one, Mike, was that if, as things come up for us, any of our board members, we would be informing Gustavo, the superintendent, to help us direct the people to the right person. So it's not that we don't want board members, we don't want, I don't, I may not know, or I shouldn't be going straight to our staff to ask a question, but I should go, hey, Gustavo, if somebody's asking this question, who would be the right person to answer that question? So that's all we're trying to say with that one. I don't know if you can give me?
I think the conversation we had around that one had a lot to do with the cabinet, and was the superintendent going to be notified first, or did the board have the green light to go straight to cabinet members? So that's where a lot of the conversation around that concept came from, and that's what the language was intended to, the language is more about cabinet and the executive team and notifying the superintendent and giving them the opportunity to, to direct it. So that's what that was, is, if we were to put some, what I'm picking up here is that it sounds a little too harsh, like, you're not?
Yeah. We don't want our community to think that we can't talk to them.
Understood. Yep.
That's our job, like, we got elected. So maybe what I heard you say, Mike, maybe an amendment could be more, board members will direct questions to the, something like, when we get questions, we will direct them to the superintendent to, that can help us directly to the right person? Sunita?
So in B, we have the first sentence already there, which says, "Board members will direct questions and comments to the superintendent, who will respond," right? Board members, I mean, we can meet as long as he knows that we are meeting with them. So I don't see.
So maybe, maybe just the first sentence?
Yeah.
Would people feel comfortable with that, just the first sentence?
Okay.
I feel comfortable with the first sentence. Okay, so I'm making, oh, should, can I make an amendment? Or does somebody want to make it? Who wants to make it?
I mean, just looking at the, we can make the revision, so we can decide on the revision, and is this the only revision?
I have one more for C.
If you look at the screen, I am making some potential text edits as we go, and if board members are happy with how those text edits are looking based on your conversation, you could simplify and just say amend as, as shown. And we incorporate that.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying. I think the second, the C one, the intent of that is that when somebody contacts us, we can't solve, we don't make decisions. As a single board member, I'm not going to make a decision. I don't know all the ins and outs. It's not my job to be like a private eye and go into a school and be inquisitive and, you know, it's actually the, it's Gustavo's job if there's something comes up. So I think what it says right now is when contacted by, by, or engaging with staff members, as with members of the public, board members can acknowledge receipt and then relay that information to the superintendent to follow up with people. We want to get people an answer for whatever their questions are. Does anybody?
What are your thoughts?
I think that's good, but we need to have some close-up, that this was answered. Somehow, the superintendent can let us know so that we know that the result of that conversation, I'm okay with sending it off to him, because it's his job to answer the people, but we should also know about what the answer was, that it has been resolved.
And the answer might be complex, I think, so it might be that, hey, I followed up with that person and it's been resolved, or we've talked about. Does that sound okay for people? It's not that, again, we talk to people all the time, I just, we don't, I don't, I am an educator, but I'm not an educator in BSD, right? So I don't have the answers for, we don't know the ins and outs.
Could it be as simple as the superintendent will notify the board member once follow-up has been?
Say that one more time, please? I'm sorry.
Could it be as simple as the superintendent will notify the board member once follow-up has been completed?
That makes sense to me.
Because the issue may not be resolved.
Yes, that's true.
But there would be follow-up.
Follow-up.
Right.
Yeah. Because they can always go to a, if they don't, if the person or community doesn't feel like it's resolved, they can then follow the complaint process. And one of the tricky parts for us is that we don't need to know, board members probably shouldn't know all the details. That should be something that superintendent and staff actually talk through with people, because the more details we know, if it goes through the complaint process, then we would have to excuse ourselves from that conversation.
Maybe somewhere like as appropriate, because there may be personnel matters I can't speak to, or student matters I can't speak to, or so maybe as appropriate, as appropriate, because there's certain things that are confidential that are protected.
How about the way it's written now? What carries?
Can we read it out loud? Can you make it big again? I'm too blind. So right now, it says, "When," oh my gosh, "when engaging with the staff member, with a staff member, as with a member of the public..." a staff member, as with a member of the public, board members acknowledge receipt and relay them to the superintendent for follow-up. The superintendent will inform board member as appropriate when that follow-up has occurred." I think that's kind of an important one, you mean that it says it's crossed, I think what I, you want to turn your microphone on and say that? Oh, now it's unmarked, so the, it's, now it reads, "When, as with a member of the public," well.
So if you look at the top, what you're seeing here, just so you can tell what you're looking at, what you're seeing here is the marked up version at the top and at the bottom, trying to keep up and have a clean copy going, it's now run off the slide.
"When engaging with the staff member, as with the member of the public, board members will not seek to resolve operational questions and complaints, but will acknowledge receipt and relay them to the superintendent for follow-up. The superintendent will inform the board member as appropriate when that."
Follow-up has occurred.
Has occurred. That feels good to me, because again, our main, we've been elected to talk to people and I think our main thing is we can't solve, we can't, it's not our job to get in those details, but it is our job to help our community connect to get the answers that they need. Anybody opposed to those edits? Or, so, so, what would you add or change? Sunita?
Sometimes, you know, like, a parent, maybe like you go in a situation, I don't want to name it, but that you have contacted again and again and nothing happens. So for some things, we need to know whether the issue has been resolved or not, too.
I think, but even in that, can I have?
I don't, yeah.
And I think that that's where the, when it's appropriate, because there might be private information there for any parent or something, so we don't need to know that it's resolved, we just know, need to know that, hey, we want to ensure that our parents feel heard and that somebody's following up with them. And if they come back to us and say, hey, it's still not resolved, we can say, hey, there's actually a complaint process that you can follow and here are the steps, and we can direct them. Because it may not, as a parent, you know, it may still not be resolved and I have that right, or a student can bring something up and they still have that right for the complaint process, and I think that honors, but it wouldn't, in our, in my dream world, as even as a parent, I would want that resolved, but I might have to follow a complaint process.
I think the difficult part becomes when, when resolved in some people's mind equals doing what was asked by that parent, and that's not always going to be the case. So that's what we need to guard against, that follow-up, yes, resolved, that's hard to guarantee.
The only, yeah. Yeah. I think for some of our staff, it might be hard to see when engaging with a staff member, because they are public, but I think it's important to name that at the same time, so I'm still having some feelings about that, but it's at a place where I could vote and move forward, so.
We can always revisit this, right? If in a couple of months, we want to say, can we add this to the agenda to reconsider? So it's not a, it can be a working document.
Yep. So in our roles and responsibilities document, if there's anybody that wants to put some, any of us that want to put something in the agenda, all you have to do is, you don't have to go to Gustavo or the staff to tell them what to do, but you can tell Sunita and I and say, hey, I'm really interested in putting something in the agenda about blank, and then we will say, okay. And then Sunita and I, and that's kind of what we spelled out in the roles and responsibility, that Sunita and I will meet as leadership and say, hey, is that, and work with our staff to say, is that something we want actually in our board packet? Is that something we need to just have smaller meetings because we're needing information? Is that actually a work session that we need to do? So we do want board members, when things come up, to talk to leadership and we're happy to look at it and think through, like, what would be the next best step? It might be the board putting it on our board agenda, it might be smaller meetings so that you get the information that you need, it might be a bigger conversation, because it's a big move and we got to decide, like, oh, actually, that's going to take us a year or two to fix or something, so it needs to be a different process, but that's always welcomed.
Most districts, the practice is to review at a minimum during every board retreat, during the summer retreat, and then kind of sign off on them again at that point.
So to move us forward, I think we could, if there was, can I just say, vote for an amendment with this?
So we have a motion on the table to approve the board operating agreements as submitted, so if somebody wanted to make an amendment to revise the draft, and then we would vote on that amendment and then vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, so is there a motion to amend the operating agreements?
I'm just getting my head around it right now. I move to amend, to approve the amended, no, I'm not saying it correctly.
We have to finish one first.
Can I suggest it's a nested, it's a nested amendment under the main motion, so if somebody wants to move to amend, to revise the board operating agreements as shown, as discussed.
Okay, so that's cool, okay.
Does someone want to move to amend the revised operating agreements as shown on the screen currently?
Thank you. I move to approve the board operating agreements with the revisions, the revision as shown, revision.
Does somebody second that?
Second.
Thank you. So let's take a vote on the amended revised operating agreements. The motion, all those in favor of approving the amended operating agreements as shown on the screen, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 I see a unanimous, this motion to approve the board operating agreements with the current amendments shown on the screen has passed unanimously, thank you. I appreciate, Mike, your work and Carrie on this and the collaboration. In this process for our board, our next item is the superintendent evaluation process. By board policy and actual contractual agreement, the board formally evaluates the superintendent's job performance annually and the valuation provided the opportunity, the valuation provides the opportunity for the board to assess the progress on district priorities. Last month, we discussed the process and Dr. Valdara's priority areas for the 23-24 school year aligned with the foundational building blocks of the BSD strategic plan. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation process?
I move to approve the superintendent evaluation process and goals as submitted.
Do I have a second? Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, we'll now take a vote. All in favor of approving the evaluation process, please raise your right hand and say yes, or raise your hand, not your right hand.
Yes.
Okay. The motion to approve the proposed superintendent evaluation process has passed unanimously. Thank you. Our final item for action in this meeting is approval of the board policy revisions we discussed in our last meeting. So Camelia will be coming up with Carrie and we will, so the district general counsel, Camelia, and the chief staff, Carrie, are now available for any questions before we vote for approval. Do we have to actually say we're going to?
You would move to approve them?
Do I have a motion to approve the, the board policy revisions?
I move to approve the board policy revisions as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion before we take a vote? Okay, so hearing no discussion, we'll now take a vote. All in favor of approving the proposed board policy revisions, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, the motion approved, the process, proposed revisions to the board policy, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to our items for future action. So again, we'll have Camelia and Carrie will stay up for the first item for action at a future meeting, proposed revisions to board policy, IGBHA, alternative education programs, IGDJ, interscholastic athletic and activities, and IK academic achievement. Go ahead.
I can go over the basis for the changes for the board, thank you. The first policy that we have for you to consider tonight on first reading is IGBHA, that is, the alternative education programs. These revisions are proposed to update the policy so that it better aligns with some changes to the ODE's rules about alternative ed programs. There's also some, there's a new definition in there that aligns and just aligning our language as well with the model policy.
Camelia, can you speak a little bit more into your microphone so I can hear better?
Sorry.
Thank you.
The language, we'll realign it to the model policy as well as updating the, some definitions and other pieces in there with changes from ODE. And I'll pause after each one if there are specific questions about.
Any questions on that one?
Okay. The next policy that we have for the board to consider is IGDJ, this is the interscholastic athletics and activities. Our recommendation is that we delete the existing policy and replace it with the one that you have in your pocket. The changes are recommended to include language that will better align with Division 22 standards regarding the interscholastic activities and get our language more in alignment with the model policy. There was just a substantial amount of changes there, so.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, go ahead to our next one.
And the last one that we are bringing to you is board policy IK, academic achievement. This is a revision, again, recommendations are to align it with changes to Oregon law about student assessment and record-keeping and reporting, as well as aligning language to the OSBA model policy.
Any questions or comments? Melissa?
I did have a question, but you did answer it in the, previously, but just that idea of anytime we change requirements for student assessment or obligations for reporting, that can really be a huge lift for our staff, and it sounds like this won't change any of those requirements, it's just matching up the language.
That is the way I read this, this is already what the district is doing around student assessment and reporting to parents, and so this is just better articulating that in the policy.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I think we've covered the policies, so thank you. We'll vote on the approval of these in our next meeting on December 12th. Our next topic is the Oregon School Board Association annual election. Chief of Staff Carrie Delft will provide some information about what's on the ballot. Let's see, thank you.
Thank you. So, yes, this is not for the board vote tonight, this is an item for future action. Each year, the Oregon School Boards Association, which is a statewide member association, of which the Beaverton School Board is a member, has an election that is for both representative positions on the OSBA board and the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, and as well, it can be on resolutions as well in long legislative session years, that includes legislative priorities. This year, it doesn't include legislative priorities, but there are two resolutions on the ballot, one to establish a caucus of rural school boards, and the second is to amend the bylaws to reflect that establishment of a rural caucus and make some other changes and housekeeping adjustments in the OSBA bylaws. There are two seats that the board will be voting on for candidates, however, in both cases, there is a single candidate, they are unopposed. Washington region, Washington County and this region is represented by positions 15, 16, and 20 on the OSBA board and OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, however, positions 15 and 20, nobody ran for those positions, nobody nominated themselves. So position 16 on the board and position 16 on Legislative Policy Committee are up for election and member boards in this region will vote on whether to approve the candidates for those positions, which are Becky Timchuck for the Legislative Policy Committee to continue in position 16, she's now with the Northwest Regionals SD Board, and Tristan Irvin with Tiger Twalton for the board position, and that would be a new member of the OSBA board. So there is information in the packet, including fairly extensive information about those bylaw changes and the rural caucus that would be established, as well as information about the candidates. So the thing to understand about the OSBA election that can be just a little tricky is that the member school boards vote in the election. Each board member does not vote in the OSBA election, each board member votes on how this board is going to vote. And so however this board votes, that is the vote that is going to be submitted to OSBA. So where we have multiple votes on resolutions as a larger district within OSBA, the board could decide to say yes with all four or five votes that the board has, no with all four or five votes that the board has, or if, for whatever reason, you chose to do that, if people had differing viewpoints, a board could say, say, we're going to vote yes with three votes and no with one vote, it is an option that a board could look into, but the vote that gets submitted is the single vote of the board.
Any questions, comments? Susan?
I don't want to bring up politics into this, but there's some issues going on with the OSBA that I don't know exactly, but I know there's some issues going on that I would love to have some clarification. I know that their executive director left, sounded like abruptly, and I don't need to know the answer or what happened there, but it concerns me about some of the things that are, you know, we're voting on.
Ugana?
Thanks, Carrie, for that presentation. So I wanted to know, just for clarity's sake, when you say we vote as a board, we, if I understood what you said, we don't vote on the OSBA elections, we vote on how we want, I, I'm sorry, I got lost on the, I got lost on the semantic. Can you repeat what you said regarding how we vote?
Yes, and let me say, this is not the first time any board has ever been confused by this, so it is just a little confusing. What that means is that board member Anunia does not vote on whether, in the OSBA election, on whether or not to say yes to Becky Timchuck for the Legislative Policy Commission. Board member Anunia votes in this board's item for action about how this board is going to vote. So we're not going to have an end result where two members of this board vote for one candidate and five members of this board vote for another candidate and that's what goes to OSBA. If this board votes and five, five members say yes to a candidate, then that's how this board votes.
You vote as a body.
You vote as a body.
You don't vote as an individual.
We get one vote as a board.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. We had, we have more extensive discussion about this, wait, no, that's a, we have more information in our board packet, so we will be returning to this topic at our next meeting on December 12th. Our next topic right now is early literacy success plan and the grant application, which we discussed at length in a study session earlier this evening. Dr. Corey, Dr. Fritz, and Robin Kabroski will provide an overview, so I'll hand over to you.
We don't have any additional information, be honest, but you all got to hear earlier, but if you have any additional questions, we're happy to answer those. Ultimately, we will come back next month for the board to take action.
I think the one thing, Josh, is if we can get the grant to the board, the actual grant application, whenever possible, to the board for their review, and that was asked earlier. And that was asked earlier.
Are we able to send that out to them tonight? Okay.
We'll get that to the board.
Carrie's on it.
Thank you.
I just had one clarifying question. It, there, there was a little, I got different messages about the limitation of support for K through three versus being able to support fourth and fifth graders, because there is that language about 20% being able to be allocated differently. Is that different allocation of funds represented in the grant, or is that not yet represented?
That's a great question. So that recently came up, and so this is another little odd thing, is the grant year is this year, but it goes back to October 1st, and it ends April 30th. So that's the first year of the grant year. In this, October 1st to April 30th, we are allowed to use up to 20% of the funds for fourth and fifth grade, which is a one-time piece, because it's the biennium jumpstart years, they're referring to it. Next year, then, that would be May 1st through the end of that two-year biennium, we can use 10% for fourth and fifth grade. Because we are doing an adoption for elementary literacy, we are looking at K-5. We are not looking at just adopting something for K-3 only, that would not make sense. We're talking about all of elementary. So that, quite honestly, 20% is not huge, and trying to spend it in that short amount of time, but that is factored in, and when you get the budget document, you'll see that how much is actually allocated to that new adoption, and that that would be for K-5.
And I could see it being helpful for the high dosage tutoring, like that's that little sliver. I don't know. Is that right?
Sorry, I have a little button problem there. Yeah, again, it's not for each part, it's in total, okay? And then there's another layer to this, when we talk about high dosage tutoring, each of those partners, so I talked about Reading Results, that's a nonprofit, they are set up intentionally as a nonprofit, and they serve specific grades in specific communities. So it's not just that we could say, well, we're going to somehow require them to do something that they don't do, we need to partner with them, they're offering us an amazing opportunity.
I think in the end, the question really is, is what are we doing with our fourth and fifth grade kids?
Right.
Right, I mean, I think that's the question, so I think that's something that will come back regardless of a grant or no grant, is what are we doing with our fourth and fifth grade kids that are struggling with reading?
And I would just add K-12, because we have middle schoolers and high schoolers that need support in reading. So this is one, and I keep going back to, this is one piece, our strategic plan is saying we're helping kids read. We don't want kids coming out of our B S D district that cannot read, that does not serve the student, that does not serve our community, and that's our job, to teach kids some basic skills, and reading is one of those life skills that kids need. So this grant is going to help us, it's a sliver of the larger pie of what we're doing to help kids read in our strategic plan, it's a great sliver, and we're going to focus K-3. That first year, we have a little bit of money to do for five, 20%, and then that, well, until April 30th, and then from May 1st to the next year, we have 10% that could be used in however way that the experts in the room think that would be helpful to those kids, so. Sorry, Tammy, I know you were waiting to speak.
No worries. And I mentioned this during our work session, just wanted to repeat it for the business meeting, that I have serious concerns about bringing in these high dosage teachers as non-union educators, feels like a very slippery slope. I'd love to hear options for having these high dosage tutors be a part of the union. I feel like we need to recognize that that's an important part of our workforce, and we should not be shifting away from that in any way. So if there's, if there's a plan or some thoughts, some troubleshooting around how we can do this with union members, that would, that would be really great, so that we can continue to have this great workforce that we're all pulling together. I'd hate to have factions in there that are not necessarily all united, and not saying that we're not all united for the kids, but our workforce, we value them, and I would like to make sure that we continue to acknowledge that this is their union and this is who we work with, and want to understand what your plan is and how we can move forward with maybe for all union teachers.
And to build off of that, too, you mentioned that for the dual language, we would probably have to build something in-house anyway, so I imagine maybe that's the opportunity, is if we're going to have to build something in-house for a dual language at some point anyway, maybe that's the area where we can build.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is really new territory. High dosage tutoring is something that has just come onto the, you know, forefront to even be thinking about, and so certainly anytime we can have our own district staff do this, I believe that is what is best. It's just something that we're going to have to spend time really exploring, and what does that look like to have somebody serving 30 kids for 15 minutes? You need 30 people doing 15 minutes, and that's really, I don't know what that would look like with our own teachers, because it's not taking a whole class, the class still needs to continue on, and so I just think it's something we need to consider and to look at.
So Dr. Balderris, and then Sunita?
So the high doses tutor really took effect when, during COVID and in the recovery period, so that's happened, and the amount of Esra dollars that were around the country, so you saw a lot of districts looking, trying to focus on recovery, and there's, to your point, Dr. Campbell, there's a lot of companies out there that are out there, there's a lot of companies out there that are, that are doing this, but I don't know how effective they have been. So to your point, I think, to Melissa's point as well, is I think there's always an opportunity for us to grow and what we can do, and this is the first time we've received this grant, but I think in the end, we're going to need to really look at, what are we doing for interventions and extensions, K-12 for kids that struggle with reading? And I do agree that the best teachers are our own teachers, I think we all agree to that. So it's how do we get to that point where it's K-12, and then what do we do for reading, math, and some wellness support for our kids? I think that's the goal. So I think, but this is $2.8 million, so you also want to put the caveat, this is off a $1.6 billion budget, this is $2.8 million, that's not going to go real far, but how do we braid it and augment it to make sure we're meeting these kids?
I also just wanted to mention, to speak to the K-12 question, that we, this year, we have invested in some Tier Two reading interventions, K-12. So using the high school success account, we have a Tier Two reading intervention, and we've also done the same with, well, 612, actually, for Lexia Power Up, and then K-5, another tool that is targeting specifically reading support. So there are some things that are in place right now that we're using to target the needs.
Sunita?
I mean, I agree with what Dr. Balderris said, and I appreciate what Tammy is saying too, but right now, the need is so high for the kids that whatever help we can get, we should use it, and I think our teachers would be very thankful that they are getting that support. I mean, how are you going to hire somebody for 15 minutes? If somebody is coming into the classrooms to help the kids, I think we should take it, and that's my personal opinion.
Any other thoughts? Well, thank you for this final presentation, and it's the last piece in our agenda. We just are now moving into comments and committee reports from board members. Who would like to go first? And this is also, I just wanted to name a time that if there are things that board members want, like again, we keep saying, you know, you can't, we're not, as single board members, we can't ask people to do things, or tell them we need this or that, or change this or that, but this is also a time, not only for you to share your thoughts and reports on committees that you're on, but also if there's something that you want to bring up to the board for the leadership to consider for either an agenda item, or a work session, or something that you're needing information on, and then leadership can kind of talk through after this, oops, after this meeting and think through that for you. So anybody have any comments, or anything, committee pieces? So Tammy?
Thank you. It's been a long night, appreciate all of you, and I wanted to appreciate Dr. Balderris' comments earlier as we started off, and knowing how, you know, a lot of people are struggling right now. But I want to love and appreciate the work that this, the previous boards have done. I want to acknowledge that this board, this work, this body of work didn't start July 1st, when the three of us took, took our seats, and particularly want to appreciate the strategic plan, I love our motto, believe, belong, believe, achieve. And I think belong for me right now is what feels right, and I feel like I've been leaning into that a lot, I want to make sure that each of our students, each of our students feels like they belong. But I know right now, our community is suffering, our Jewish brothers and sisters are still in mourning from the attack on October 7th, and we are all still hoping for the release of the hostages safely and swiftly. And our Muslim community is also in mourning, are, one of our community members has lost 39 members of his family in one bombing, and even with a pause in the bombing, those in Gaza continue to live in desperation and destruction and deprivation. And, you know, harkening back to, our board work didn't start July 1st when we came on, and we know that this conflict didn't start on October 7th, but I am heartened by the ongoing temporary ceasefire, and I wish fervently for a permanent ceasefire. I'm also heartened by the release of hostages on both sides. It feels so, so exhilarating to have the reunion of so many children on both sides coming home to their families. And I'm hopeful that as we see the healing happening over there, that we continue to have healing happening here. I want each student, each staff member, to know that we care deeply about them and what they're going through. We want each of them to know that they belong, that we as a district, as school board members, care about them, and will do what we can to help them through this crisis. So if you're a student that's struggling, I want you to reach out to a trusted teacher, counselor, your principal, you can even reach out to any of us up here, and that goes for staff, too. So for everyone, for our Jewish community and our Muslim community, and everybody who cares deeply about humanity, we will get through this. We are resilient, and in the Beaverton School District, we will not tolerate antisemitism, and there is no room for Islamophobia, because in B S D, there is no place for hate. And I hope we can all come together. My heart breaks almost every day, and so I'm thinking of all of you and of all of our students and our staff that are struggling right now. Thank you.
Any other board members have comments? Susan, and then Sunita?
I would just make a comment that I would, first of all, I think it's important that we look as a school district, what we can do and what we need to do is support all of our students from all over the place. We have a lot of students from different cultures, and I want to make sure that our, all of our students feel safe in our schools, and our teachers feel safe in our schools, and I am concerned about a lot of our students and teachers not feeling safe right now, so thank you.
Sunita, Justice Ugana, then.
So I, on October 25th, we had a bond accountability committee meeting, and I wasn't present there because I wasn't here, but I did watch it in the, on the video, and if anybody is interested in knowing more about our bond equity contracting practices, goals and practices, it starts out with that, it was a very great presentation, so if you're interested in that, please do watch it, it's online, and it was followed up by a person from SCANSA who gave an update on Beaverton High School update and how, how it is being implemented, so that was also very good. And the other thing that the meeting they covered was deferred maintenance, how they decide, talked about Mackin Street Company, which was hired in 2019, how they reviewed each and every asset in all of our schools and created a database, which helps us figure out which asset needs fixing, and how the bond dollars are being utilized for deferred maintenance. So if, if anybody's interested in that, that is a great, great presentation. Thanks.
Justice?
Thank you. I just wanted to share, although I didn't get to do one of the visits, we have had, I've had the opportunity to do a visit at Mountainside, and a couple, we had visits that some of us did with the buses and facilities folks last, last month, that I didn't get to acknowledge. One, that I think it's really important that the community know the great things that are happening in our buildings, in our facilities, in our operations. There's a lot of heartfelt folks, and at the, at an age where the story of what's happening in our schools can outpace the reality of what's happening in our schools, that we acknowledge that there's a lot of great stuff and a lot of great people at all walks in our building, and I want to thank Dr. Balderris, we had a great visit at Mountainside with Principal Labossier, and, you know, I just want to make sure we elevate the idea of, let's go see what's happening in our buildings, not just the stories that we may find on various outlets. Thank you.
Ugana?
Thank you. So I just want to comment on the Early Literacy Success Plan. I have received, I've heard from our community members who have shared their concerns on the urgent need to better support some of our students who are low-performing readers, and I just want to say that we hear you, and I look forward to the board voting on the plan next month, and I especially look forward to seeing how this plan would better support our students and drive favorable outcomes, especially for our low-performing readers. So I do look forward to seeing that happen and seeing how better we can support our students and do right by them, and yeah, thank you.
Melissa, is there anything?
I want to thank our administrators. We were able to sit through, not sit through, collaborate with, listen to, learn from 18 different school improvement plans, and it just to hear the passion from our administrators about, and their teams, about what they're doing to really move the dial for our students was amazing. So I just, it was a great gift to be able to listen to them and just ask questions, and it was a new process for us. This year, we've been trying to find ways that we don't stay just in our zones, but that we can actually go across all zones, because we are responsible for every student in our district. So we do have, again, that list of schools, that a whole calendar, the whole entire year of when we're visiting schools, so we are in schools, I've been in Beaver Acres, I just went to Flex Online, and there's a bunch of other schools that we'll be visiting this year. So if you, if your work, I know people work, too, so for some of us, it's a little difficult to get time off of work because we have that, but if you can get out, it's always great to see the kids and to learn from them. This month, we also were invited by different community groups to listen to their stories and to hear the impact of what's happening, you know, nationally or across our world, but how it impacts locally. And so thank you to that, those community members for that gift of, of sharing their stories with us. Again, like Dr. Carpenter said, there's no place for hate in our buildings, and so if something does happen, please report, we have multiple ways that students, families can report, community members, teachers, because we do want to address those things, and we are following up on the reports that we've gotten. So thank you to our staff for staying late, and thank you for everybody for all the work for today. With that, were there any closing thoughts, Dr. Balderris, before we?
Just thank you, and the meeting goes faster after 10, so, so, thank you.
Okay. With no other agenda items, the November 28th business meeting of the Beaverton School Board is adjourned at 10:47.